I'd like to call to order the school board meeting for Stillwater Schools Independent School District number 834. Today's date is May 10, 2018. Barb, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Board Chair Lehman.
Here.
Vice Chair Pelletier.
Here.
Treasurer Pearson. Clerk Al Lachlan.
Here.
Director Hepner.
Here.
Director Patachak.
Here.
Director Stidland.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director Hepner, could you please read our district mission?
Yes. The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you very much. And Director Al Lachlan, our board goals?
The Stillwater Area Public Schools Board of Education ensures outstanding learning opportunities for the social, emotional, and academic growth of every student in our school district through authentic partnerships and meaningful communication with our community, parents, and students. Every decision is made with a commitment to equity for all students and for generations impacted by our actions. We provide our stakeholders with regular updates on student achievement along with continual plans to enhance student learning in our district. We ensure that our systems of management and oversight are clearly defined. We invite ongoing dialogue and partnership within our community to learn from their knowledge and to enhance learning for our students.
Thank you very much. Could I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And I want to make one comment.
Oh, when we get to the consent agenda?
Correct.
Yep, I'll make sure we pull that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All those in favor of tonight's agenda, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. All right. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. We'll turn it over to Superintendent Pontrelli.
All right. Thank you very much. The first thing I'd like to share is that we are working on several improvements to our special education programs. And the board and community know that we went through a special ed audit and then our special education team has been working on programs and in-depth study. And with that, we've had families come in who have had the opportunity to share some of the things that have been working and haven't been working for them. But most notably, we've had a few folks come in who've talked about things that they would like to have that would support them better in their roles as parents. And so our special education team, Caroline Ziski and Paul Lee and John Frye, who will not be with us any longer, and Annette Selman will be following through on these possibilities of these projects. And some of the examples of those are extracurricular options for additional sports. And you've heard our teams come forward and talk about the soccer and hockey teams that they have. They're looking for another possibly softball team. A webpage for resources for families that can also include special education activities for families to participate in. A parent support group. A thread of music opportunities throughout our students' experiences in Stillwater. This would be in addition to their regular music activities that they have. Increased partnership between our summer adventure club staff and special education staff to offer longer and more consistent support for students over the summer. Currently, our students who have an extended year program typically have about a three-week program. And we're looking to partner with community education if we can and sustaining that longer over the summer for longer periods of time. So I really give Annette Selman and Paul Lee kudos for working on that because that's not a simple thing to do. We also have congratulations in order for Sarah Damon. Many of you know Sarah and the wonderful things that she does throughout our school district and for our community and for helping others. Sarah will be accepting a Fulbright Scholarship to Study and Create Curriculum in Botswana.
Wow.
And so she'll be auditing classes and population studies at the University of Botswana. And we will ask her to a board meeting to be recognized and share a little bit more details with you. But that's been a pretty amazing accomplishment for her. Stillwater Middle Schools presenting another showing of Screenagers on May 23 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I know a few of you have attended the previous screening at Oakland. And so we just encourage those in our community to attend that event. It was highly spoken of. Let's see, what else? The Mental Health Initiative. We have several folks here tonight that are going to be sharing more information. So I'll keep this brief in my superintendent's report. But the Mental Health Collaborative was created to be able to improve mental health services for not only our students within the school district but our connections and resources in the community. And several folks are here this evening from Family Means, Youth Services Bureau, NAMI, Lakeview Hospital, the Rotary, who will help support this, Noon Rotary. And all of these folks came together to support the mental health needs for our families. And they presented some ideas for us to consider that we'll be meeting on May 21st to take a closer look at. But those endeavors are pretty remarkable when you look at the work that this committee has come up with. And initially, it was a little bit slow-going because when we started the committee, it took some time to get to know the things that were happening already in our community, what the school district was providing. But some of the projects that have come through that, and I'll let folks who are speaking give you a little bit more information on this, but one of the ideas was called Bridging Wellness. And the goal of that project is to connect existing in-school student wellness instruction to family awareness, discussion, and activities using communication with a consistent format that will connect what our students learn in school and give talking points to parents at home. There's some amazing work there. We also have high hopes for continuing and extending the work for the Make It Okay projects. That's something that we've talked to you about before through Lakeview Hospitals. They've got some great ideas for us. There's a Peer Helper Program that we're looking at at the high school. And that is really providing peers and students working with other students to help them through some of the difficult experiences that students have. And more program and training for our teachers and a number of things. So I know that some of our speakers will share more with you, but I'd just like to thank each of the folks and organizations who are here tonight to share more of that information with you. I have more. Too many notes here. The district also received congratulations on exemplary assessment administration for the MCA during some of the surprise monitoring visits that MCA conducts or the Department of Education. And I'd like to thank Melinda Westbrook-Fiero for oversight and our principals and teachers for their strict adherence to MCA rules and regulations for our students who have to take those tests. Or maybe I should say get to take those tests. They are filled with lots of rules and regulations. So it's stressful for our students. It's stressful for our staff who are trying to organize that in the correct way. This process doesn't bring a lot of joy to those involved usually, but we're really grateful for our staff who take care of the millions of details to help our students be successful with that. I'd also like to recognize and ask Annette Selman, our Community Education Director, to share a little bit with you about an event that some of our administration attended at Lakeview or through Lakeview Hospitals and Health Partners. And then she's also going to share some exciting news about a theater program.
Sure. Great. Thank you. So Paul Lee and I had the opportunity to attend an event at the Science Museum the other day. It was held by the Make It Okay Initiative. And it was just a beautiful event, first of all. I mean, they did a very nice job. And then as a part of that event, they had the unveiling of their new exhibit, which is certainly about the Make It Okay movement, but also about mental health in general. And that, you know, in true Science Museum style, it was fun, it was interactive, and it was very informative. And so I think families of all ages would enjoy this experience. And I would highly encourage people to go and take a look. It was wonderful. So that was a great event. And then the Performing Arts Program that Denise mentioned. So Griff Sadow is our director, our theater director at the high school. And we've had the opportunity in community ed to experience him through our community theater program during the summer months. We have now been able to expand his position with community education. And he's going to help us provide programming, performing arts programming, pre-kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. So we are developing enrichment and performance opportunities at the elementary level and club and performance opportunities at the middle school level that we will be rolling out next year. So we're very excited.
And we just received also a little bit more excitement around the theater program that Griff shared with me. He was informed that the Stillwater Area High School has been selected as a winner of the 2019 American High School Theater Festival Award. And the experience of performing at the world's largest performing arts festival as part of the American High School Theater Festival will be unlike any performance your students have ever experienced. They are being invited to Edinburgh. And so that is for the summer of 2019. So Griff is being invited to go this summer and find out more about it. But it is an amazing experience for our students. And those of you who have been lucky enough to see our kids in action when they've had their performances, it's really exciting. And I think the future of our theater program is growing. So, thank you. The last piece that I would like to share as part of my superintendent's report is that we'd like to congratulate School Board Chair Lehman on his appointment by Governor Dateman to the Minnesota District Court 10th Judicial District, I'm sorry. The timeline has yet to be determined, but we'll work with Director Lehman and between the school district to figure out a timeline and a process for his replacement. But it's an amazing accomplishment, and we're proud of his efforts. And although we'll miss him, we'll be keeping an eye on what he does up in Anoka. So, thank you, Chair Lehman.
Thank you very much. Next are the introductory items. And we'll start with the student report. And I don't know if it's Annabelle or Ava's going first.
I'll start tonight. Hello. My name is Avia Okanovic, and I'll be covering sports and activities going on at high school. Tonight, the boys' baseball team is playing Forest Lake while the girls' softball team plays Park. The girls' and boys' golf teams both have competitions as well. The boys' track team qualified for True Team State on Tuesday at the section meet in Eagan. The True Team State meet will take place on May 18 at Pony Stadium. The spring formal was held in the PAC last Friday from 7:00 to 11:00. The dance was only for freshmen and sophomores, and over 350 students showed up. Student Council was very excited with how well the dance went and looks forward to continuing this event in the future. Student Council had their banquet last Thursday night and celebrated all of the success and hard work that took place this year. The elections are over, and seniors are done with student council responsibilities. The newly elected presidents Nikhil Kumaran and Abdul Mohammed ran their first meeting this Tuesday. They look forward to filling these chairs at school board meetings during the 2018-19 school year. Tickets for the following fine arts concerts can be purchased on showtics4u.com. The choir concert, the choir has their Pops concert on May 24 at 5:30 and 8:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium. Those tickets go on sale on May 11. There are two upcoming orchestra concerts, the spring concert on May 17 at 6:30 and 8:00 p.m. and the concerto concert at 3:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium. Tickets have been on sale since April 20, and may sell out soon. The concert band will be performing at 7:30 on May 15. And the Wind Symphony has a concert the following day at 7:30 as well. Again, buy your tickets soon as they may sell out. And lastly, at noon on Tuesday, May 15, the Wind Ensemble will perform their traditional service performance during the law enforcement memorial service at the historic courthouse. The public is welcome and encouraged to attend this wonderful event that recognizes our law enforcement. The Wind Ensemble has performed this service for nearly 30 years. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Annabelle Gregg, and tonight I'll be updating you on some of the academic things that have been going on at Stillwater. So currently, English 11 is exploring how they can change the world through an end-of-the-year research project. While Bell Choir students are working on their song for the Pops concert where they will be performing the classic "Uptown Girl" by Billy Joel. AP US History students and many other AP classes have been working tirelessly as they prepare for their AP test. Spanish 4 students are presenting their music videos they made where they became famous Latino musicians and embrace their stardom and videography skills. Pre-calculus students are working on transformations in regards to conic sections. And as many of our advanced placement classes wrap up with their testing, students are propelled into independent research topics and projects. This is a very exciting time for our students who get to research their interests in the context of a class at a very deep intellectual level. Seniors recently attended class meetings where they learned the ins and outs of all things graduation. Students are submitting applications to speak at commencement, ordering caps and gowns, and final transcripts. And the excitement for post-high school plans are growing. Senior signing day was a major success, and perhaps you saw the super fun pictures of seniors with their respective post-high school plans. A huge thank you to the College and Career Center for hosting that much-adored event. The warm days of May and the impending last day of school are definitely not helping to boost the motivation and focus of students. The excitement for summer is everywhere. As we wrap up these AP testing weeks, it is almost certain that intangible buzz will continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a district recognition tonight. I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Pontrelli.
Yes, we do. Thank you very much. This evening, we'd like to welcome to the podium folks who have been engaged in the Mental Health Collaborative with us the past year. And so we have organizations, as I mentioned earlier, who are represented here, who we'd love to have speak to the board. And we also have many of our community members and other partners and staff members that we'd like to have come forward to be recognized also. So if you'd make your way. Mr. Sherman, would you mind starting since you're right there and we can have folks follow you?
Don't be bashful.
Yeah, come on up.
I won't. Thank you very much, Superintendent Pontrelli and members of the school board. I'm Bob Sherman. I'm the Executive Director of Youth Service Bureau, which has been providing mental health and other services to young people and families in the St. Croix Valley for 42 years. A little over a year ago, Superintendent Pontrelli asked me and a number of colleagues of mine, including heads of Family Means, Lakeview, Canvas Health, and others, to come together as part of a community discussion on mental health in the school district. As Superintendent Pontrelli mentioned, we got off to a little bit of a slow start. But the bottom line is that after engaging dozens of members of the community, including members of the district staff, service providers, parents, students, and others, we've now come forward with a number of recommendations, some of which Superintendent Pontrelli described. And I would characterize these to fall into two groups. We've divided into an awareness and prevention group, which covers students, it covers parents, it covers faculty and staff. And then there is also a support and crisis group, which my colleague Mike Huntley from Youth Service Bureau has been leading the effort on. We've come forward with two or three recommendations in each area. And the reason these recommendations are coming at the right time, I think, is because if you read an article in the Washington Post today, you would realize that anxiety is the number one that students across America are facing today. It far eclipses depression. But it's leading our students into a dark place in many cases. There's harmful behaviors that are emerging that sometimes lead to suicidal behavior. And the staffs in our schools are overwhelmed with the need to work with these kids and make sure that they have the resources and their parents have the resources to be able to deal with these challenges. Parents across the country are really struggling. I'm a parent of five grown kids and two 10-year-olds now that are stepchildren. So I'm going through that process again. And I can see in my own stepchildren the kind of anxiety that they deal with on a day-to-day basis that comes from meeting school standards, being successful in athletics, listening to and sometimes obeying their parents. And, you know, just the challenges of growing up. And for all of us, there were challenges. There's no question about that. But the demands of our society today and some of the challenges presented in community living and politics and others are leading to extreme cases of anxiety and need on the part of our students. District 834 has been a leader in this area. It's engaged Youth Service Bureau and Family Means and Lakeview and others to try to serve the district over the years. I'm not going to get into a lot of detail about our recommendations, but I will mention Make It Okay, which is basically a nationwide program that is being led by Health Partners and locally by Lakeview Hospital. It is an extraordinary program that is focused on removing the stigma associated with mental illness. And as many of us know, if we break a leg or we suffer from diabetes or whatever, we're not shy about sharing that with our colleagues, with our family. But if you suffer from anxiety, from depression, if you suffer from suicidal thoughts, in many cases, the last thing you want to do is discuss it with a parent or a colleague or anyone else because of the stigma associated with that. The Make It Okay campaign is designed to help people get past that. And Marna Canterbury and Kelsey Ford and others at Lakeview are experts in this area. They have colleagues that want to bring that into Stillwater schools. As far as I know, there's not going to be any cost to that to the school district, which is extraordinary. And it's one of our top recommendations that we begin work on that this summer. Staff education is another important area. And in that regard, we are talking about piloting and program hopefully next year, maybe the year after, depending on how quickly we can get organized in the high school and the middle schools to provide the kind of training and resources that staff need in order to recognize the signs of anxiety and depression and suicide and to find the kinds of resources that they need. Superintendent Pontrelli mentioned the Peer Helper Program. This is something that one of your own employees, one of your own teachers might call, has a lot of experience with in the Hastings and Hudson School Districts where they've been going on for many years. And what it does is engages teachers to help students learn how to help each other. Because research has shown that the first person that a student goes to is another student when they have a problem. And one of the last people they go to is a person like me, an older person, that they may not know as well, even though they may be a counselor, they may be a teacher, again because of stigma and shame sometimes associated with this. This Peer Helper Program is a proven program that will teach these kids a lot about helping each other. Superintendent Pontrelli also mentioned the Bridging Wellness Program, which was designed by Tamara Morrissey, who's here this evening, and Mary Gugisberg is working with her from Youth Service Bureau. And this is designed to help inform parents about what their kids are learning about in mental health in the schools and also to find resources that may be needed. That's all I'm going to say about the awareness and prevention side. Mike Huntley couldn't be here this evening. He's out of town. But George Nolan and Superintendent Pontrelli and others are very aware of his recommendations. And we'll be meeting next week to talk about those in detail. I want to end by saying this. This is a commitment that the school board needs to get behind. This is something that will take some funding. We don't know exactly how much it's going to take, but this has been a product of a year-long effort to try to bring together experts in this field. And I want to commend this district for taking the lead in this area. This is a real problem for our kids. It's a real burden for our teachers and staff to have to deal with. But it is something we can get our arms around, and it is something we can help with. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this and know that all of us at Youth Service Bureau, Lakeview, Family Means, Canvas Health, and others are committed to helping your district. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelsey Ford. I'm with Lakeview Hospital, Health Partners, and Make It Okay. I'm the community coordinator on behalf of Make It Okay. And I really can't follow up on Bob. He really described everything perfectly with the campaign for Make It Okay. We're just really grateful to have this opportunity to engage with the school district, to bring in some training for teachers, some awareness for students. It is completely free. I just want to emphasize that. So it's a really exciting opportunity. We've had some really great success with New Richmond School District, Somerset School District, bringing some trainings in-service days and really engaging with teachers and then having an opportunity to engage with students as well. So we're really excited to be partners in this work. And I'm just going to keep that short and sweet and have some other partners talk about their amazing work as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi. Hello. Nice to be here. Thank you. Erin and I are here from Family Means. And I only want to say to you how much we appreciate the support and involvement of the school district and the staff. The counselors pretty much screen the kids before they come in and see us. And the teachers are really good about referrals. And the principals and administrators are all behind this work. And we couldn't do it if we didn't have that kind of support on-site. So thank you to the whole district for all that they do to support mental health services for children. And Erin will give you more. We have, I think we left it with Denise, some information about what we're doing in the district. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We feel very privileged to do this work. So thank you for that.
That is hard to follow up with as well. So I'm the new clinical director at Family Means and have taken over in recent weeks. But we, again, just wanted to say thank you very much for the partnership that we've had with the district for almost 30 years. It started as a group for children whose parents were going through separation or divorce. And slowly, over time and expanded funding, we were able to expand into every single building in the district and provide mental health services. In the past four years, we've been able to do that. And just to give you a snapshot of the past year, we were able to reach 458 students and their families and provide over 3,200 individual sessions for families. So we're really being able to reach a wide range of families in the district and being able to address this huge need that we have. So again, we just want to thank you and the collaboration with all of the buildings. And it's been a great, great partnership so far. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tamara Morrissey. I think a lot of you know who I am. I'm a parent in the district, and I come from a business communication background. And I did not have the expertise that some of the other people had that were involved in these community conversations. So each of us brought our own perspectives, and each of us came up with different ideas and things. And the one that I'm working on is called Bridging Wellness, unless we come up with a better idea, but that's what we're going with. We've got high schoolers working on a logo for us this week, so I think we're going to stick with that one. It's not a done-deal package. It's more of a grassroots thing that we're going to be building this summer and this school year. And it'll be involving, working with staff members that are already teaching wellness topics. And our emphasis at first initially is going to be mental health and the middle school and the high school. And to have a consistent communication go to parents that involves a couple of different aspects. And one is giving them a little bit of information about what their kids are learning at school. So this might say, "Next week, your kid is going to learn about this." But then the next step is, "Here's some things that you might need to know that might be different than what's taught in class." It might be, "You may have learned this, but this is how we're talking about it now." Things like that. Then the most important, the meat of the whole project, is the section in which we give specific things to empower parents and students to have more discussion about this. And exactly what those would be would depend on each teacher and what they're teaching and what they want that content to be. But to give parents not the, "Hey, we're talking about anxiety next week. Please talk to your student." But more than that, and hopefully to put things together in a way that gives parents an opportunity to be able to say, "Hey, this is a question I can ask my kid." Or, "I can ask my kid, can you tell me something about this that you learned?" But might also allow me to ask my kid's friend, "Hey, what did you learn about this topic or that topic?" And so that hopefully, we'll be able to engage not only parents, but people beyond that concerned adults using a similar format. And coaches might be able to get an email that says, "Hey, this is the topic we're covering in 7th grade health class. Just thought you'd like to know the types of questions we're suggesting adults that care about kids talk about with the kids." And they might go, "Hey, how many of you have anxiety when you're up to bat? And how many of you is it really bad?" And just lots of different ways that it could grow. We haven't yet put a solid box around exactly what's in and what's out. And I think that that's best because we want to work with the teachers and the staff. We want to get some parents and other community members involved and say, "What are we already doing in school? How can we tie the parents and other adults into this? And should it connect here or should that part not be part of it? And what is too much and what is too little?" And so, you know, I met today with some middle school health teachers, and they were talking about, "Well, you know, if we do this," and then we ask them to talk about it in advisory, "That might be a piece." And so want to leave it open for some of that ideas and outside-the-box ideas. But we are still forming and we're still developing exactly what it's going to look like. Our hope is that at the August staff training, we will have instructions for all staff members in the high school and the middle schools. And... in the high school and the middle schools, and a number of examples that they can see that are done. We are starting to build a spot on Google Drive that the teachers can share and collaborate. The purpose of the task force is not to tell the teachers what they should be teaching, but to help get some consistency. A lot of teachers are doing this type of communication with their families, but they're not doing it consistently. And for families, then that's, "What's this, and what's this, and what's this?" And that consistency should help to improve that. That said, we are seeking volunteers, both to serve on the task force, which would be sort of a broad range of perspectives, to kind of help guide the process, and to, as we get further into it, to give it kind of a bird's-eye view of what's working, what's not. Are there areas that nobody's covering? Or is the first week of March the week that everybody is covering everything, and we need to spread it out a little? We are also looking for parents to be involved, either on the task force, or, now I'm talking to some of you guys here, to also be involved as draft readers. A lot of teachers that I've talked to so far have expressed the desire to get some feedback from parents, and if we could get some students involved to say, "Here are some things that we drafted. What do you think?" And they might say, "Oh, don't say it that way. None of the kids will like it that way." Or they might say, "Oh, this part's confusing." Or, "What if you asked this question?" Or suggested that they talk that. And that would be really helpful. And then we're hoping, over the course of this school year, to gradually build the number of topics that are covered in this way. And ideally, in the long run, it ends up as a resource that's available year-round to parents. So maybe they covered anxiety in seventh-grade health, but now they're in eighth grade, they realize they need a little more, and they need to read that "for" section that they never looked at before, which is, "What do I do if I think this is a problem? Where do I go? Do I go to the school counselor? Do I go to my doctor? Do I go to Family Means? Where do I go? Where do I get more information?" And so, it's sort of a grassroots, build it up from the bottom, little elbow grease here and there, not a lot of money involved. But we do still need some helpers, and I'll be here, so you can tell me that you're interested, and we'll find whatever level of commitment you want to make. So hopefully, some of you will join us.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Tom Burkas. I'm here representing the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Minnesota. Our offices are in St. Paul. We just recently moved. And so you may see two different addresses in the packet of materials I gave each of you, but it's the 1919 one is our new address, and we're working to get that changed in our materials. I work specifically with Ramsey and Washington Counties in support of the county-level efforts being done by NAMI volunteers, and also in support of other efforts related to mental health. I have not been directly involved, as these folks have, in this task force. I'm actually kind of waiting for them to get a little bit further to see how, as NAMI Minnesota, we can partner in terms of supporting where they really want to be heading. NAMI's three areas of work here in Minnesota are support. We have support groups. One of the things you'll see in your packet is a two-sided white piece of paper that has all the support groups in the metro area. There's a lot of them. We also do education, a variety of education events all over the state, actually, as are the support groups. But we continue to partner with Washington County on some of those. And advocacy. Our director, Sue Aberholden, and a couple colleagues make life miserable for some of the people on the Hill who are not taking mental health as seriously as she and her colleagues feel they need to be doing. And you can think good thoughts as they approach the end of the session for efforts that are being made, a wide variety of efforts. The packet of materials you have gives you a variety of other information, including some things specific to youth and children and parents. We actually have a lot more material than that. The best way to get a handle on it is to go to our website, namihelps.org, which is listed on several different things. If you have specific questions, feel free to call our office. Our phone number did not change, so that should be consistent. And just indicate to the person you talk to what it is you're specifically interested in. There are about 40 of us working at our office, and so we cover a wide variety of things. But it's been a real honor to be able to work with folks here in Washington County. I've been doing this almost for two years, and so I certainly knew of Stillwater. My wife and I live in Maplewood, and education is something near and dear to actually almost every direction you go from our family. My wife is an elementary school principal in the Roseville School District. So I get to hear a lot about what happens in a school district. But thank you for the opportunity to be working with you, and we look forward to continuing to do that.
Thank you very much.
My name's Elizabeth Sullivan. I'm the founder and director of an organization called Empower Survivors, which is in Stillwater, Minnesota. We usually, most of our clients are adults, adult survivors of childhood sexual abuse. But in the last year, a lot of, we've been having kids basically call up and ask to be part of the group, either the kids themselves, or they're coming along with their parents who we're seeing. They don't really have a place for them. And I wanted to be more involved with the programs that you're doing. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to. But I know that the need for mental health services is huge, and especially for these kids. Because unfortunately, the kids are being diagnosed with things like ADHD, and bipolar, and some other things, where some of them, you know, that is what their diagnosis is. But some of them are getting abused at home. And over 90% of the time, it's by somebody that they know and trust. And so to have this in the Stillwater School District, to have things available for these kids, and be teaching, you know, the staff as well, that may be the reason Johnny's acting up, or Annie's acting up, is because of the adverse childhood experiences that they have going on in their life, which might be an incarcerated parent, might be, it may be that they are being sexually abused by someone that they care about. And it's really important. I've also, I graduated from Stillwater Senior High. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice, I talk too much. And I've had past students now that know that I have this organization come to me and say how, when they were going to school in Stillwater, all the issues that they had with mental health, because they were actually being sexually abused. And they said, you know, "Where was this years ago?" And I said, "Well, it wasn't there because we weren't talking about it, but people are talking about it now." So I just want to say thank you to everybody who's working on it, and also really say I really hope that you guys do implement these programs. Because it's the teachers that see these kids, and most of the time, the kids are being, you know, they're abused in their own homes, and maybe their parents were sexually abused. So when their child starts acting up, they don't know how to deal with their own kid because they didn't deal with their own garbage. And that's what we do, is we try and help the parents, but now they're bringing in the kids. Because they're finding out their kids are getting sexually abused because nothing stopped it. So, I mean, it's not all about sexual abuse. There's anxiety due to academics, everything else, we all know that. But I have three kids in the high school, oh, two in the high school, one just graduated. And I have kids come to me because they know that, you know, well, so-and-so's mom, she's, you know, does groups and this sort of thing. So they're coming to me because maybe they're suicidal because they're gay, and they don't know how to come out and talk about that with anybody. Or the academics there in so many AP classes that they're suicidal because they can't keep up with it all. Or they're used to getting As, and they get a B-, and that's the end of the world for them. So to have something in place where we're educating faculty and staff on adverse childhood experiences and mental health, I think would just benefit the community as a whole. I mean, just sexual abuse alone, one out of four girls, one out of six boys, and we know most never tell, so statistics are actually higher. So just this whole conversation about having a trauma-informed school, adding that piece in there as well is huge, because our schools really are, we're a safe house for a lot of these kids. I've had kids come to me and say, "If it wasn't for school..." I'm sorry. This is near and dear to me, sorry. They've said, "If I didn't have the school, I wouldn't have anything." So for them, it's huge. So they need to have these parents, they need to have the staff and other people looking out, and being able to pick up on that stuff, and maybe instead of, you know, labeling them with some, go, "Hey, what's going on? You know, you're angry, what's happening?" You know, just in being taught those things. And I know teachers today have enough on their plate, so a lot of them are thinking, "Well, why do I want to be in charge of this too?" But whether you know it or not, you have kids walk in through your doors every single day that have adverse childhood experiences, and you may be the reason they decide to live another day. So it's important to have that. So, sorry I went long.
No, thank you for sharing.
Yep.
Any board members want to comment?
I would. Can I just roll first? Can I just hang on a cup? No, then definitely you need to wait. I just wanted to recognize, Bill Turnblatt is here, and many of you might know him from his role for the Stillwater City Council, but he is here because he's also, in his other life, a member of the Stillwater Noon Rotary, which one of our directors, Shelley Pearson, is also. And they directed efforts for fundraising to help provide more services for our students this year, to the tune of about $10,000. Is that correct, Bill?
Oh, my gosh, that's great.
So I was hoping he'd come forward, but I see him sitting in the back. And then the last thing I would, I know that we're running out of, I mean, I know that this is taking longer than we typically do for our recognition, but it is very important, as you hear, and the folks who have shared with us tonight have spent the whole last year working on this. And so with that, we have staff and community members and other providers who I would just really appreciate it if you would come forward and share your name and what your role is, either in the school district, or how you're helping us with the community. It will only take a couple of minutes, and I'd love to have you recognized, so.
Yeah, start us off.
Okay, you all know who I am. So last spring, Denise sent out an email, and it was the 13 Reasons email. And that was a tough email to send, and it was poignant, but it was a tough topic. And she sent it, and the night I got it, I honestly said, "That's brave." And I wrote you a note, and I said, "This is one of the bravest things, and I'm so proud of you for sending it, and let's talk." Because what I do is I deal with the inmate population, and 2/3 of the inmate population have a diagnosable mental illness. And one of the things I teach is suicide prevention among the inmate population. And I think you cleared your schedule, and we met two days later, along with Rachel. And it was like so uplifting to have people acknowledge that mental health in teenagerhood affects how they do in school, but it also affects my livelihood. I mean, if you all want to get rid of the inmates, I'd be fine, if we could do something about the mental illness first. And I'm so proud of this board for embracing that idea, and for this team for charging ahead, and for this community to say, "This is important, and this is vital." And all of our students, all of our kids, if they're struggling in whatever way with their mental health, that we have said, "Okay, let's make a safety net. Let's make it okay." And so I just want to commend this whole group for doing that. It's a good thing.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. I'm Jean Streeter. I'm a program manager for the Department of Public Health and Environment here in the county. And we have multiple efforts throughout the county for health promotion and prevention programs, including suicide prevention and other mental health initiatives. And this has been going on for many years. Through our required community health assessment, mental health keeps rising to the top as one of the many health priorities that we need to be addressing. And so we do this in multiple ways. And the team of people that I work with go out to all of the communities for coalition building, whether it's around mental health or other healthy behaviors. And with me tonight is Natalie Vasile, who has been very involved with this Stillwater project.
Yes. Yeah, so I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to partner. It's going to be a fun ride, and I'm excited to help with any sort of technical assistance that you need along the way. So thank you.
Natalie and Jean, I didn't see you behind back there, but they've, through Washington County, have done a tremendous amount of work with us, organizing and just giving us lots of support, so thank you.
Franklin Hatzl, substitute teacher and peer professional in the district. And I'm just interested in the mental health aspect of things for, you know, getting it to our students, because as someone who has mental illness myself, that we want to see the kids of today hopefully not suffer the way I've suffered over the years.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heidi Hubbard, and I'm a parent of two girls at the high school. I'm on the Board of Family Means, and I'm here to be a cheerleader for the Wellness Center. And I'm grateful to Family Means and Youth Service Bureau, and to all the families that have helped support the Wellness Center. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm not very good at this, so. I have no words, and that's odd for a school psychologist to have very few words. Anyway, I'm Colleen Feldman, a school psychologist at Stillwater High School, and I've been a part of the community discussions for the last year, finishing my 15th year, I believe, in the district in my role. And working with kids and journeying with families is really what I am all about, is I serve families and kids, regardless of what their situations and circumstances are in life. I think my kids went to a different school district, a green school district. And the kinds of services that we provide here were not available at their district. So I think our kids are really fortunate, and I'm very pleased and proud to be part of this community. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm last, and I'm probably the person who's been here the least amount of time. My name is Chris Lepage. I'm a pediatric neuropsychologist, and I moved to Stillwater about two years ago from Sacramento. In that time, we fell in love with the community, had our second son, and I founded a private practice in downtown just a few months ago. But beyond the professional, technical expertise that I might be able to offer, and hopefully a successful practice with the Chamber of Commerce membership as well, I'm excited to be invited to the table, to be involved in the discussions about how to access community resources. And one of the themes that I hear everybody talking about is collaboration and partnerships, school board, private practices, community organizations, large hospitals, whatever the representative went, working together. And I'm happy just to have a seat at the table, and to learn, and listen, and be more involved as we grow our family and life in Stillwater.
Thank you for sharing your expertise.
Thank you.
Any board member comments? Director Lachlan?
So I just want to echo the gratitude and express my thanks to Superintendent Pontrelli and her team, and to all of our partners. I lost a grandparent to suicide, and the ways in which my family spoke about that loss, but more importantly and more accurately, the ways in which it wasn't spoken about, communicated a lot. And I now parent myself, and wanting to really be part of that effort, in fact, I was looking for my Make It OK! button, to have the honest conversations, the open conversations, where we can give our students and our community the language to talk openly and honestly. I've always been very up... I've always been very upfront with my own students and my kids and others in age, developmentally appropriate ways, of course, about my own struggles with depression and realize how lucky and blessed I am that I have really good healthcare and I have access to the resources where I can get support and help, and that's not the case for every family. And I think that's why it's so critical that in our schools, and it was mentioned before, that we can provide that service and that resource, because we know that, for whatever reason, all families may not have access to that. And that's why I'm so grateful to NAMI. I'm on their mailing list. I would encourage everyone to sign up. Their executive director does an amazing job talking about the legislative piece of it and the advocacy and the things that we can do to help make sure that everyone has that right to quality mental health and services. So, I just want to thank you, and I want to thank the board for, you know, as we engage upon this work with our strategic plan, I think we have been really crystal clear about the social, emotional, and academic support for our students and making sure that we are looking at the totality of all of our students in the fullest expression of themselves and with mental health at the fore. And I'm really proud of that work and those conversations we've had together as a team. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Potatick?
Yes. I think some of you know this, but I spent about 20 years of my life as a high school principal, assistant principal, and sometime at the middle school. And I couldn't help but, as I listened tonight, I saw so many student faces of kids that I've encountered with the kinds of things you talked about. I remember a girl that I always referred to as Eliza Doolittle, which is obviously an elan, an alias, and she was abused by her father, and she had to testify against her father who went to prison. And so, as I listened to those stories, unfortunately, they're too common. And I also taught a long time as a classroom teacher, and quite honestly, I never saw this. But it was one of the revelations, especially as an assistant principal and then later as a principal, not in Stillwater, but in several different places. This is so, so common. So, thank you for turning back the veil and allowing us to proceed in dealing with it. So, thank you for all of what you do.
Thanks, Mike. Director Pelletier?
Okay. Every meeting, I say to myself, I'm not going to cry, but somehow it happens every time. And gal over there, I just... I feel very strongly about this. I have since the beginning. I talked to a few parents on a regular basis who attend the meetings and are not, you know, very vocal, but just kind of sit quietly. And I talked to one of the moms today, and she said, you know what? The most important thing is that touch point for a child, touch point at the school, a touch point. So, I thank you for the comment and here, Mr. Sherman, wherever you are, about the staff education and the peer, that peer component, bringing it into the schools, because in this society right now, we're, you know, we're stressed, the kids are stressed, the parents are stressed, a wide variety of stressors. And I think we are forgetting our level of humanity and just having those touch points, not via an electronic device, just having a conversation. And let me tell you what, this board is going to forge forward in support of this. I'll say it right now. It's going to happen. And from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Heppner?
I just want to comment as a grandparent, thank you for what you do. I think when my kids were growing up, it was a few years ago, and we didn't seem to either pay attention or didn't have the problems. But I've got grandkids that are a senior, twins are ninth graders, I've got a sixth grader, a fifth grader, and a third grader, and I'm just thankful that there are programs like this if they need help. I hope they don't, but I suspect they probably will, and thank you for being there for them.
Thank you. Director Stivlin?
Well, I don't want to be left out, so I'll just say something. I have been, I just want to say I've been honored to be kind of a participant and a witness to the journey that so many of you have talked about today and that we've been on this year. It has not always been very pretty. It sometimes has felt a little bit confusing and messy, and I think that's a good thing. I think that the solutions that were found, that we narrowed, we had so many wonderful ideas and so many incredible conversations about all the different things that we could try and all the different problems that we wanted to try to attack. And I think what we ended up with is something very reasonable, very doable, very cost-effective that's going to have an impact. And I really, really look forward to the next phase, which I think could be even a lot harder, but maybe it'll be more, even more rewarding to see it actually being implemented and really having an impact on the lives of our kids. So, I just thank you for the time that you have all spent. It's been an incredible journey, and I look forward to what's next.
Thank you very much. My wife and I had the honor of attending the Youth Service Bureau Gala last Friday, and it was abundantly clear, listening to the speakers, that Superintendent Pontrelli and her team have really kind of set the bar high for the other districts. There was also ISD 833, South Washington County, and also Maplewood, North St. Paul, Oakdale. But really, Stillwater is taking the lead in this, and it's just so great to hear about that. One of the speakers was a student from the high school, and he talked about how he was really going down the wrong path, and it was for the efforts of the Bayport Police Department, the services that we have at the high school, the resource officer that turned his life really around. He's going to graduate this year. He's entering the military, wants to become a police officer. So, it is important, as you've all heard. So, again, thank you for everyone who does this hard work, and it only benefits our kids. So, with that, we'll move on to open forum tonight. We have four speakers, so let me read our open forum rules and regulations. So, Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, the law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward the comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask the administration to review the concerns presented. When you're here, your name is called. If you could come to the podium, state your name and also your address. Director Pelletier has the clock. She, we allow five minutes per speaker, and she will count you down from two minutes. With that, the first speaker I have tonight is Pat Myers. Welcome.
Thank you. Superintendent Pontrelli, members of the board, good evening. I'm here tonight to lend my voice to a ongoing conversation that I know all of you are aware of regarding Anderson Elementary. And I want to lend my voice to that conversation so that we can keep the spirit of this dialogue alive, so that this conversation can be ongoing, and so that we can present solutions to make sure that we're addressing the challenges that exist at the school. Secondarily, I'm here to be the voice of my kids. I have three kids that attend Anderson Elementary, a fifth grader, a third grader, and a kindergartner. And I feel very strongly that they don't have a voice in this discussion. And I also feel very strongly, as their father, that my role is to be their voice, to be their champion, to be their advocate, and to be their support and their help. I wholeheartedly believe that they deserve a quality education and a quality experience, and so I'm here to represent them. I'm also here because I want to be part of the solution. I, along with many other parents, have had dialogues with members of the board, members of the district, school administration, teachers, and staff. And I don't want to sit here articulating what the issues are. I want to sit here to be part of the solution so that all of us are working together to make this school a better place, knowing the challenges that we've experienced over the last year. I have three asks for the board this evening, and then I actually have a story I'd like to tell. My first ask is, about two months ago, we had a lot of conversations that enacted some solutions at Anderson Elementary. My ask of the board is to please keep your expectations high and to validate that progress is being made. The solutions that were implemented, to me, are nowhere near enough to drive the improvements that we need to see at the school. And I would ask that over the summer, there's a deep dive analysis, there's reflection and learnings of what happened this year that are applied to starting next year very strong. The year's almost over, and so for us, I think we have got to go into the next school year with a clear strategy and clear expectations of what's going to improve in the school. My second ask is that communication continues to be transparent and ongoing and frequent. I think you have a large percentage of the parents at Anderson that, like me, want to be part of this solution, but we cannot be left in the dark. I think that you have parents that desperately want to understand, what's the strategy? What are we trying to do? How can we help? When I, I work in the business sector, and when I'm presented with crisis and I'm presented with challenge, my team looks up to me to be honest. My team looks up to me to be real about the issues. My team looks to me to bring them into the solutions so that we're working together to drive the improvements that are necessary. My hope and my trust is that what's getting to you is not muted. My hope and trust is that between the district, administration, teachers, parents, and the board, we're all talking about the issues so that we can identify the right solutions. And I hope that's what happens. The third ask is, we support our teachers. My ask is not because I'm here speaking on behalf of the teachers. My ask is that I wholeheartedly respect the teachers at Anderson Elementary. We've had wonderful experiences with many great teachers, but unfortunately, I don't feel personally that they have the tools, the resources, or the training to address the challenges that presented themselves at Anderson Elementary School this year. And I would ask that the board, the district, and administration does their diligence to ensure that they have the support that they need to continue to focus on teaching our kids versus having to focus on disruptions in the classroom. So, my story is this. Two weeks ago, my daughter, who's a kindergartner, came home from school, and the first thing that she shared was how during the day she was touched inappropriately by another little boy. Unfortunately, this was the third time that this has happened to my daughter who's in kindergarten. In this instance, I'm forced to have discussions with my daughter that I wish I didn't have to have. What respect between little boys and little girls really means, what's appropriate and what's inappropriate touch. When I looked into her eyes and had those conversations, I saw confusion, I saw a lack of understanding, and this is a kindergartner, and I saw fear. And out of her mouth that evening, she actually told Nicole and I that she was scared to go back to school the next day. And what saddens me more than anything is that these stories, beyond just that, are in a lot of cases what students are telling when they come home from school. And this is, this is the moment for me where our kids should be having a great experience. Their curiosity, their learning, the stories that they're bringing home are not stories about that. It's stories about the quality experiences that they're having. So, please take that into consideration. Please understand that their challenges are still there. Please understand that we're here to try to work with you, to bring the right solutions to the table. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Carl Blondin. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carl Blondin, Sunrise Avenue, Stillwater, Minnesota. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Pontrelli, I'd like to start by personally congratulating Chairman Lehman and his selection to be a district court judge. We've known each other professionally for many, many years, gone toe-to-toe against each other and been colleagues. I'm certain that his intelligence and his prudence will serve the people of Minnesota as well as they have served this district. I would also like to address the proposed changes in open forum rules. The making of rules concerning open forum, of course, is entirely within the discretion of this board. It does not have to allow an open forum. It can have an open forum. It could place whatever restrictions it likes on open forum. However, to put it mildly, to prohibit criticism of individual board members is bad optics. I agree with what Chairman Lehman said at the last board meeting. And let me suggest that if people can't take the heat, they get out of the kitchen. Looking at the proposed rule, it even looks like I would not be allowed to compliment a board member for doing something right. No individual may be identified. So, I'm going to take this time to compliment Director Heppner. Thank you for the great job you did ushering through the purchase of a new school bus facility. That is something that is, definitely has your mark on it and something that will benefit students for years to come. I can also criticize poor George and say, well, I remember a few meetings ago, you were talking about how traveling basketball was playing in the Pony Activity Center, and I can complain, why am I paying taxes to build and maintain the Pony Activity Center when we don't have language labs for the foreign language students at the high school? Now, I think the public benefits by both the compliments and the criticisms, and I think we lose something with that. There are many people in this district who will make false statements of fact, misrepresent the law. They do it here at this podium, they do it on social media. I think it benefits all the taxpayers to have those people identified and what they've said incorrectly corrected. We are more successful as a society when falsehoods are exposed. There are few enough places where we have a forum to discuss things. People of ill will will always find ways to say bad things and spread their ideas. This board should not close down a forum where true speech can be made and where free speech can be made. The best remedy against false speech is true speech and free speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Next speaker I have is Jean Streeter. I think they were part of the mental health, and I, just to make sure we don't miss anybody, the next one would have been Elizabeth Sullivan, was also going to talk about mental health as well. You're good. Well, you can have another opportunity if you'd like, so. All right, that concludes open forum. Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda, and I will basically read, "All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the school board and will be enacted by one motion and an affirmative vote by a majority of the board members present. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate subject of the discussion by the board." And I'm aware that number C would like to be polled, so tonight's consent agenda are the minutes of the April 26, 2018 school board meeting, and B is dispersment register April 20 through May 2, 2018. So, could I have a motion to approve A and B of the consent agenda? Thanks, Mike. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, those carry. And then, Mike, you asked for the human resource report, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, and what I'd like to try to do here, I have the personnel report in front of me, and there are three positions that I'd like to single out and talk about. I think I can do that without referring to those individuals by name. And again, I don't... And again, I don't know these three individuals, so it has nothing to do with that aspect. What I'm concerned about in the first position is a 1.0 FTE school psychologist, Anderson in Lilly Lake Elementary. And the salary placement is for roughly $75,596. The second position in that same section is a coordinator for behavior support district-wide. Again, the salary without benefits is $75,430. And then the final, third one, is a 1.0 FTE student advocate, Stonebridge Elementary, My concern is basically this, that following both the papers and some of our meetings on finance, is we're being asked tonight to approve three salary positions, a school psychologist, a student advocate and a district-wide coordinator at well over $7,300,000 each, including benefits. This comes at a time when the district may be facing a $2.4 million deficit. And I thought perhaps this should be put on hold while we ponder our financial status for 2018, '19.
Any other comments?
Will we be then voting on this directly?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I guess I would like to echo this idea that we would perhaps just be a little bit more careful about the timing here and make sure that we can afford these positions before we actually go through with them. I mean, we are hearing that we are going to be given a budget that's a deficit budget, so I think we should be careful about what our spending is.
Director Pelletier?
So, yeah, I had a couple of questions about it as well, and I guess I thought that Kathy Moe was here, but I don't see.
Answer the question.
Okay. Could you address, you know, there were questions that were going around and around. I guess I'd like to just maybe address them publicly for the room. Is one a, you know, there were three, one is an additional, or can you just elaborate on the specificity of these positions?
Sure, I can do general, and then I can, Dr. McDowell has been working with staffing, can add to that. The first two positions are not additional. They are already included in the budget that you approved, and so they're replacements for people. The third person.
Sorry.
The third person, the behavior specialist, is expanding the role of the current behavior specialist at Lake Elmo. We've shared with you how the implementation of the green room has been very successful. That was one of the things that our community at Anderson really wanted. To be able to implement those programs, you need to have somebody who knows how to do that. And so moving that current person who's working with that program to have access to all of our elementary programs is giving us access, moving from one school to coordinating and helping support all of the programs within the district. And that's an additional $8,000 from what we pay. That's for moving her from a nine-month contract to a full-time year contract.
Anyone else?
So I guess my question.
Just a second.
So sorry.
Just a second. Director, I'm going to try to give everyone an opportunity first to say something, so. Director Lachlan?
Thank you for that explanation. I think that absolutely, I mean, I echo what Dr. Petacek and Director Stivlin are saying about the budget constraints. Clearly, that is something that we, as a board, need to have some serious conversations. We've started that with our finance learning sessions, and we'll continue that. We have some decisions that will come before us in the next few months related to budget. But for me personally, when we're looking, particularly the two positions that already exist and simply filling them, one of them being a school psychologist, to me, that is about the last position that I could dream of cutting because I know what that role does to serve our students. I think that instead of looking at staff, I would rather look at whether it's memberships that we are a part of, other things that perhaps might not have the direct student impact, cutting into classrooms, cutting into teacher support. So I'm not opposed at all to having a more comprehensive conversation, let's do that analysis. But I do not support at all cutting staff that are going to take away services from our students.
Thank you. Director Stivlin?
Yeah, so thank you. I was just going to ask, so I think maybe part of the confusion that Jen brought up, which I also had the same confusion, is if these positions aren't new, why were they listed under the hires and?
Because they're new hires for people who have left the system, or somebody has left the system or gone out on leave or.
Okay.
Posted position.
Yeah.
A reminder.
Rehires.
A reminder that on your HR report, that anything that's been posted in hired position lives inside of this HR report, so they're going to, that's the purpose of the report, right, is to transparently show what's leaving the system, what's coming into the system. Some of the confusion might be on the fact that we do categorize them as whether they are new, replacement as part of something else. That's why it's always helpful, before we get to a meeting like this, to propose questions to us so we.
I did.
We did.
Yeah, and that's why then we give you the answers and try to help you understand that going into it.
Director Hepner?
Well, one of the benefits of having been around the district for a couple of years, we used to have elementary counselors in this district. I think when the argument came up about the stimulus money, and some of us were on the board at that time, it was, well, we're going to add student advocates and psychologists and use the money for that, knowing full well that we were going to get to a point where that would have to be discussed. Are those crucial positions, or are they, you know, throwaways, or do we limit the people that we bring in to $50,000? I remember we had that for a while. Ironically, you know, we're discussing these positions at a night when we just had folks talk for quite a while about the mental health needs in the district. And I just don't see us not needing those positions. I would like to believe we could get a student advocate in every building if we don't have them, that we would get a psychologist available to all our teachers. I think one of the things that cropped up at Anderson during the year was we had somebody that was part-time at a couple of buildings. And so when things happened at Anderson, maybe they were down at Afton. When things happened at Afton, maybe they were up. I mean, to me, somebody said it earlier, I think we look other places for funds if we have needs. I don't think that those three particular positions that were pointed out are areas that I would have any concern about.
Well, I agree with you, George, and I just want to piggyback. I can't sit here and hear the stories that are coming out of Anderson without trying to do something. I think we're all smart enough where we can find other areas where we can look at covering, seems to be about $8,000 worth of costs.
And maybe a larger context of the story might be with all three positions combined. The first two positions that were pointed out, and all three of them are mental health because this is something that we've been working on this year and are a result of all of our elementary principals coming together and retooling how we currently distribute behavior paras and behavior support and behavior support teachers across the district. By making the moves that we are making right now, and what you see on here, every one of our elementary schools is going to have a behavior support para. Every elementary school is going to have a student advocate, and every elementary school is going to have at least a part-time school psychologist. To the one open forum presentation, this is, in my mind, this is exactly the answer to the question of, what is the additional help that's going to be provided to schools? And this is what it looks like. I can't echo any better than what Superintendent Pontrelli said in that that third position is crucial to make sure that we have consistent implementation of things like a green room that is going to be very necessary and is proved necessary at Lake Elmo. We use versions of that at Stonebridge right now. We're implementing it at Anderson Elementary. It's crucial that we have someone who knows how that system operates, is well-versed in MTSS, and can make sure that we're implementing these systems with fidelity.
Thank you. Director Petacek?
Sure. Couple of things. Number one, in the responses that I got, tonight's the first time I heard there was an $8,000 difference. So I'm saying that's new to me. As I originally went to this, I looked at the three highest amounts in hiring. That's what stood out with me, and it always will.
It's our contract.
I know. But I'm saying I'm looking at that. I was unaware, and I think what you've said to me is that these three positions, which total $225,000 without benefits, are positions that were already there except for $8,000. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah, and I'm saying that's new information to me. Now, if you asked me if I was going to make a $225,000 change, would I go here? No, not necessarily. What I think is necessary is the discussion. I notice, or rather, my experience has been that when districts face deficits or shortfalls, one of the areas they often look to is holding positions that come open until they're able to resolve the issue. Now, one of the things that I think most people, at least up front here, are aware of is that Mark Dayton has gone through because of the 2.4 shortfall that he saw for us and a number of other area schools and Minnesota schools, and he's pushing for $138 million in emergency funding. Now, by May 21, we're going to know whether the governor is successful or not. Again, if you read the article that I read in yesterday's Pioneer Press, it's out there. I don't know if it's going to happen or not. Now, my dilemma is this. If we don't come up with freezing any kind of openings that come along and we're $2.4 million short, where's the money going to come from? And to me, that's the real discussion. Is this a way to get the issue out there and talked about? You bet, because I think it's very pertinent. If everybody who's up here, everybody who's listening, either in this audience or at home, goes home tonight, calls their local legislator and says, hey, guess what? We think you ought to support the governor's push, that'd be wonderful. And it's well worth the time that we're doing here, from my perspective. It's also interesting, in that same article, that some of legislators felt that it was the school district's fault, and I won't mention the one, but the truth is, according to one legislator, that some school districts have not been realistic about how much they can afford to pay their employees and have entered into union contracts that are squeezing classroom budgets. Another pointed to the fact that, well, maybe what we could do is free up some of the money that was going into community education or early education programs. Now, I don't happen to agree with those, but I'm saying that's the convincing and the sales that has to take place. And I'm saying, if these three positions go through tonight untouched, I won't be particularly offended. But I'm saying somewhere along the line, the old quiche, you got to pay the piper. And if we're $2.4 million short, we've got to find it somewhere.
Thanks, Mike. Dr. Pelletier, did you want to say anything?
I just wanted to close out my comment that, you know, it has nothing to do with the position. I'm fully, fully in support of that, and I completely support the need. For me, it was just more of a formality of, you know, it's in the consent. I think, you know, I think the public wants to hear more communication from us at the board table, and I personally had just a couple of questions. They weren't, it was just more with the formality of the document. And I think the discussion is great and valid and warranted, and I'm very excited to support it. I just had a question about it. And I think it's good for our community to see us just raising questions, having the discussion and feeling good about our votes based on those discussions.
Great. Director Stivlin, I'll give you the last word.
Oh, Molly, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. I totally agree with you, Director Pelletier. It does raise the question for me, and again, I agree with what has been stated already that, you know, these are obviously needed positions. We're pretty far down the line as far as in the process of, you know, actually implementing these positions and getting these people in place and everything. So to try to upset that apple cart right now is not such a good idea. But I do really have a concern about when are we going to have a conversation about this supposed $2.4 million that's being tossed around? And as a board member, I know nothing about it. I heard about it in the paper. So I want to have those conversations. I want to know what options we have, why are we in that situation, and what can we do about it? And June is coming, so.
Thanks.
I'm a little concerned.
Yeah.
I'd like to just respond to it. I don't know that that's accurate. We had discussions during our contract negotiations about what would happen with the budget for that, so I don't, I'd like to revisit that. But two of the things that I think might also have an impact on this vote this evening is, one, some of those implications that you don't always know as board members. For one thing, hiring a good school psychologist, student advocate, behavior specialist is very, very difficult. And part of the problem we had with our Anderson this past year, one of you mentioned earlier, we didn't get folks on board until October, November. So the team looked back, and this was principals and our leadership team, how do we use the resources we currently have to redesign what the behavior specialist and the positions look like within the district? So to be able to give all of our schools the support that they need at a cost of $8,000, I think is pretty significant and great work. Also, I think we need to recognize their expertise is in analyzing the behaviors that are happening within the schools, talking to our teachers and using our teachers who are experts in designing what that looks like. And I trust their recommendation and decision.
Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item C, which is the human resource personnel report. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to, no, it's all right. I'm going to recuse myself because I do have a relative in the hires. Not happens to be one of the three that we're talking about, but there is a relative in there. And I've been told by the attorney, I don't need to do this, but I'm going to do it just so we don't have a conflict.
Thanks for being overly cautious. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, thank you. Next on the agenda are the reports. The first is the Q-COMP year-end update. We have Deb Van Kliet and Jennifer Marty. And Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Chair Lehman, Superintendent Pontrelli and members of the board. I'm just here to very briefly introduce Deb Van Kliet and Jen Marty, our two Q-COMP leads here in the district. Q-COMP, as you know, is a program that is now at the conclusion of its second year, and we're here to brief you and update you on the progress of our program. It's a program we're very pleased with, very proud of, and before I turn it over to Jen and Deb, I just want to thank them for their expertise and their dedication and their skilled work, so.
Thanks, Dr. Hill.
First of all, thank you, Chair Lehman, Superintendent Pontrelli and the rest of the board. I just wanted to take this opportunity and thank you for letting me celebrate my birthday this evening.
Wow.
With all of you. And in honor of that and supporting our awesome wellness policy, each of you have a small little gift bag that I've shared with you, the silly putty, so you could do a little physical activity, roll the ball, use your muscles to stretch it, stress, whatever works. The books are a gift that you could gift to maybe some of our elementary schools, or if you'd like to go to the school. of our elementary schools, or if you'd like to go to the school and read the book to the class.
Nice.
You could do that. It highlights some of the equity work that we're doing, along with just the love of reading that we have. Yes.
Educator. And they talked, if you were going to relieve stress, go back to what you did when you were a kid.
Oh, yeah.
So the only thing that was missing, that I remember very well, is bubbles.
Bubbles.
All right. So with that, we'll let Jen go.
Good evening, Board Chair Lehman, Superintendent Pontrelli, and members of the board. I'm Jennifer Marty, and I am honored to have had the position for the last two years to be your QCOM lead, one of your QCOM leads. I think one of the things that I've reflected on over the last couple of weeks as we prepared for this presentation is, when we came to speak to you last year, it was a new program, and we were really trying to define what that was going to look like and the impact that this could have for our teachers and for ultimately our students. And what I really think we've done this year through the support of Dr. Hill, and most especially Superintendent Pontrelli and Dr. McDowell and the other directors, is really including us and really teaming and really connecting with the spirit of QCOM, which is the collaboration between the teachers and the school district, which I think has led us to lots of success. And if you look and refer up here, this is our mission statement for the TDEP process. And the area where I would like to address the most is that last statement in red, which is improved student learning. And I would say, tonight, as we talked, well-being of our students and the work that we're doing to help align that through strength in educator practices, which is what we know we really need, and our teachers need our help. And so the QCOM program is really something that I believe can do that. So, without further information about that, I'm going to turn it over to Deb, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about the components that we have with our QCOM program.
So our QCOM program supports the three components on teacher leader options, the job embedded professional development, and our teacher development evaluation plan. And this is specific to Stillwater and what our QCOM plan has to offer. Not going to read through those, so. I think it's important that we've really highlighted this year that our Stillwater teachers and staff are learners. And we have had an amazing opportunity with the work to really take professional development to a new level, we believe. We have provided over 85 different learning opportunities over three days to 13 sites. We're very proud of that. The learning leaders and the opportunities that they have brought to their school sites have really strengthened and deepened the opportunities our teachers have gotten around professional learning. And our teachers are leading that professional learning. So that's really, really exciting. Here are some of the 85 things that we have offered. And all these things are aligned to our district goals and our building goals and our teachers' goals that they set for themselves during that TD and E process. So it's very strategic and it's very well planned on how we're meeting those needs of our teachers and our students With each of the days we had professional development, we did a quick five-question survey using Guskey's Levels of Professional Learning. And one of the questions we asked was, you know, how was learning your participated and impactful in strengthening your knowledge or skills in educator? And when you have 86% of your staff say they either strongly agree or agree that it improved their knowledge and their learning, I think that's pretty impressive.
What I was also equally impressed is, as a teacher, we all know that timely feedback is one of the best ways that we can help support the impact of the learning. And so with the work that Deb and I were able to do, we were helped to create and streamline a CEU system, and this is where we got the data. So when you're wondering, well, how many people took that information? Almost 100% of our staff did because it's how they created and got their CEUs. And so with that information, not only did they say it made a difference in their learning, but they were going to apply it. And that's where instructional coaches come in and how they connected. And we were able to give feedback within three days after the professional development to the instructional coaches and the principals about the people that wanted support, how they wanted the support, and what they needed still and the resources they may need, which was very timely and important, and I think also was a part of why it was so successful. So at the end of the year, we do a little survey that just asks the teachers about the QCOM components and how they felt. And this year, we're proud to say that through the support of our directors, and most importantly, our principals, and then our teachers, we had almost 100%, 80%, high 80% participation in that. And through that, we got a lot of great data. And we thought, well, we could come up here and talk to you about that. But instead of that, we have a great teacher here, Lacy Oster, that is going to share a little bit about the impact that she felt from the supports that we had this year through our career ladder positions, teacher development and evaluation, and our professional development.
Welcome.
Good evening, board. As Jennifer said, I'm Lacy Oster. I currently teach fourth grade at Rutherford Elementary. This is my eighth, ninth year in the district, and I can wholeheartedly say that through this process, I feel it being much more meaningful. I think as we set goals for ourselves every year, it's nice that this has been supported. And I just wanted to give you just a little example of how I've used this this year. We've been talking a lot about responsive classroom, and one of my goals was just having that engagement within my classroom. And it was so nice because at the beginning of the year, we had options as staff to be able to get additional responsive classroom strategies. We've started almost every staff meeting with different responsive classroom ideas that then I have taken within my own classroom in the morning to do morning meeting. And so many times, I feel like in the past, we go to professional development, or we go to staff meetings, and it's like, okay, what did we really take from that? We're always saying that we want our instruction to students to be meaningful. And I feel like this is meaningful to our staff, and we can put that into our students. Just one example I wanted to share is, one of my personal goals this year was to improve my students' reading levels, and it was running records for them to improve two levels. Second semester, I chose the option to meet with our instructional coach. And over the last couple of months, I've been meeting with her, and my goal was for her to help me train families and parents to come in and help conference with students that are in my own classroom. And it's just neat that I'm able to use the time that I have with my goals, that I'm able to use with other staff members for being able to shadow and watch them in their classroom and with our instructional coach. So just want to say kudos because it has been neat over the last few years to see this evolve and to see our professional development and things just become more meaningful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And so to echo that, when we talk about next steps, some of the things that we are hoping to do, I think what I hear Lacy saying is that Dr. McDowell's worked a lot on, and Superintendent Pontrelli, on alignment. Prior to this, I was a teacher in the school district for a long time, and I don't ever remember feeling very connected to my site plan that had to do with my evaluation, that had to do with the work I was probably doing in my PLCs. And so through this process, we start with the world's best workforce, which I know you have a lot of work that you're putting on. The QCOM program really connects and supports some of the strategies that we're going to be using, particularly around the professional development. And now that we have the TD and E process, how do we continue to not make that a separate thing and a hoop for our teachers to jump through, but to really focus on the growth and development that the process really has the potential to have? And through the connection and the alignment that we have with our directors, I think you're going to hear more and more of the echoing statements that you heard from Ms. Oster, which is really exciting and why I'm so excited to continue to support the work.
So some of our next steps with QCOM are to continue to strengthen the communications between QCOM and TDEP. They're different. They're kind of like married. You've got this and this. They complement each other, but they are different. Continue the work of alignment of the goals for all stakeholders, to strengthen our job embedded professional development, to take what we've done this year and continue to improve on that. Our collaborative team support around PLCs and buildings, which support site goals in the buildings. And then we will next year be implementing the mentor program. Next year, we'll be kicking that off for our new staff in the district. So with that, do you have any other questions?
Yeah. Well, let's open up for questions. Director Lachlan?
Thank you, and happy birthday, Deb. Thank you for the gifts. Can you talk a little bit more about the mentor program initiative for the implementation? Kind of what may be some, you know, big picture, high-level conversations you've been having? I know that's been, I think, an expressed desire from a lot of staff members to have something like that take great.
So it's going to be, we talked about kind of four different areas in which we support our teachers mentally, emotionally, institutionally, and instructionally. So Jen, I'll be working with our new staff and having some one-on-one support in collaboration with building principals and instructional coaches within that building, and then also having some very specific professional learning opportunities around instruction, around the equity work that we're doing, strategies to incorporate in your classroom to strengthen teacher practice. So those are things that we'll be doing throughout the year as part of the mentor program.
I think one of the other things to point out is that, one of the things Deb and I were very intentional about when we collaborated was working with our directors in human resources about who are Stillwater's new teachers. And I think that, you know, when you build a program, you have to build something that fits for your system. And we don't hire a lot of brand-new teachers to the district. We hire a lot of transitional educators, and I was one of those 10 years ago that came from a separate school district. So the needs and supports that they have are different. So one of the things that I'm really excited about as we move into the program is we've differentiated the program. So we've just modeled good instruction. We have, you know, opportunities for our brand-new teachers, and then we have another level called transitional educators. And then we know in our school district, we have a lot of educators that move within our district. And when you move grade levels, content areas, that comes with its own challenges, too. So everyone would be offered all supports, but then we're going to differentiate amongst that. And another exciting thing we've done is, we've gone out and met with probably about 75% now of our new hires this year, and asked them about what were the things that you had that were successful, what were some things that you wanted to do, and what were some things that we could have done better. And the one thing that echoed and just wanted to give our plug for our staff is that, you know, our teachers support our teachers very well in the trenches. And so adding this program is just going to have that extra support systems.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Director Stivlin?
Can you talk a little bit more? You just said on the last page where it talked about the next steps. First of all, happy birthday, too.
Yeah, thanks. That's right.
That's really cool.
I got a hot date. Let's go.
Sorry. They're meaning into a party. So this is really exciting work, and I appreciate all the work that you have put into this. But I have to say, it is a little bit complicated. Like, I have a lot of questions, like, okay, what is this? How is this different from that? So one of them is, on the next steps page, it says strengthen communications of how QCOM and teacher, the TDEP plan, they're two different things. What, can you talk about that just a little bit more? Like, what are, how are they different? Why are they different? Why are they, I mean, where are they coming from, and why do they need to be aligned?
So feel free to interject, but I'll just go first. So the QCOM program is a voluntary program in which our school district, with the school board and our union representation, work together to come up with a plan. Those were those three.
The original.
The three areas, right, the core components. The TD and E, or the TDEP, that is statutory, required by state statute, that whether we had QCOM or not, compensatory with that, our teachers would have to participate in that program.
And so then, do you see that, do you foresee that at some point, those two things will overlap, or will they just always stay separate?
Well, they complement each other. You know, they support each other. Like, I don't see them ever being the same thing.
Okay.
The state of Minnesota, four years ago, required the new TD and E process, which is now, like, all of our teachers have to be evaluated by a formal evaluator every three years. And then the other components in our teacher development and evaluation process. The QCOM process and the way our district wrote it connects and aligns to the supports that we'll have with our TDEP process.
Okay.
It's just funds to support the growth and development for our teachers through the process.
Okay. So the TDEP is not optional, and QCOM is optional, right?
It's an agreement, yes.
It's an agreement that we decided to embark on. And then I just had one other question, too. So when, on the page where you're talking about the three core areas, there are teacher leader options, A through E, QCOM leads, instructional coaches, district-wide PD committee, special ed site coaches, and curriculum mentor. So I have two questions. One is, how are those positions decided? Like, how does a person get to be one of those things? And then, more specifically, what's the difference between a curriculum mentor and an instructional coach?
So you have to, that's okay. All these positions are funded by QCOM.
Okay.
And you have to apply for the position. So like, I had to interview for, apply for this position and interview for the position in front of our QCOM board.
Okay.
And go through an interview process. And there were other people that interviewed as well.
Okay.
And still through our human, I mean, it's still posted through our district positions.
Okay, okay.
And then, the instructional coach curriculum mentor. So since we haven't had a mentor program, and our instructional coaches came in about four or five years ago, I think some of our instructional coaches have absorbed some of that work. However, what I would say that when we're creating our program, the difference will be, our instructional coaches really should be supportive of all of our staff, but not experts in a content area. They're in more of a, you know, having reflective practice and having discussions. Curriculum mentor would probably be somebody that teaches the same thing you teach, content area, special ed, whatever, that would be able to give you more in-depth conversation on that particular thing.
Okay. That makes sense. That makes sense.
Director Patachak?
Yes.
Are we done soon?
No, that's fine.
Funding issue. How much support do we get from the state for QCOM?
We'll turn that over to Mr. McDowell.
I can pull up the numbers in a second. Here, I just did them today.
So while he's pulling that up, can I just pop one more?
Please do.
Be wrong.
So how do we know this is effective?
Well, I think that what we're seeing is improved teacher appreciation for their goal setting, and also for the professional development that we're having, and also more of a connected and aligned work through our site plans. I think over time, we'll be able to develop measures for how that'll happen. Right now, I'm excited in year two that we're seeing a huge change in how teachers are viewing their work with their instructional coach and with the professional development that they're being provided.
Okay.
So I think over time.
It's still new, essentially.
It's still new, yeah.
It's still a work in progress.
Yes, yes.
That's great.
So do you want to repeat the question again, just so everyone knows where we're going?
My question was, how much state support do we get for QCOM?
Yep. So currently, where we're at with QCOM budgeting, we receive $169 per student in the way that we've, in the agreement that we have. And so if you, what ends up happening is you multiply that by this year's October 1 counts, whatever that static number is. And so we're looking at about $1,441,995 in QCOM monies for next year.
Would you say that again, please? And do you have any idea what the difference is locally? We have to make up to make it work.
I do.
Thank you.
Waiting for that one.
So what ends up happening is, of that, of that one, let's just say roughly 1.4 million of that, we're able to cover about $750,000, $751,000 in the salaries and benefits of those areas that Director Stivlin asked about. So all of the instructional coaches, the QCOM leads that are part of that package, the salary and benefits come to about just a little over $750,000. Then there's the performance pay component. So that's what teachers are eligible to receive by going through the process and/or meeting goals that they make and/or the building makes as part of the requirements of the QCOM plan. That performance pay, we'll call it, is just under $680,000. So those two numbers there cover, or basically eat up the 1.4 million. We then do supplement and come together, I would say, with that. On the district side, we have just under $500,000 in additional instructional coaches to round out the totality of instructional coaches. We are, because the mentoring program is important to everyone, what we've decided to do is to take the cost of the mentoring program and fund that out of learning and innovation as well. So that totals about $520,000. So that totals about $520,000 is what we're putting in on the district side. So it just, it ends up being a total bill of just under $2 million.
Okay. And as a follow-up, I think I got those, but would you send me a copy?
I can.
How about all of us?
I can. Actually, what I read for you, and the reason I did that, is because Director Pearson knew she wasn't going to be here, and so she asked that question. So I can actually just forward you what I sent her earlier today.
Thank you.
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So I just want to clarify. So if somebody is participating in that program and they set a goal, like you talked about, for themselves, and they meet the goal, they get a certain amount of money. Do they know what that is ahead of time?
Yes.
And if they don't meet the goal, do they not get it?
Correct. And that is what these two ladies specialize in knowing the details of and working with our staff around.
So you want to plan your goal carefully?
Yeah. And that's what we do. And we go out and we work. And, you know, one of the things we reflected on the last four years, being an instructional coach or doing this work, I think I've probably set close to 600 to 700 teacher goals with them. K-12, which has been a pretty amazing learning experience. I'm very thankful for that. It's very important work. So, yes, we work with teachers on setting their individual data goal and their personal growth goal that's aligned with the building work. And we get the opportunity to sit with the directors and have those discussions with principals to help teachers have those discussions about how they can see themselves as part of the program. And so oftentimes, we do see, most of our teachers do have success in that. And then they put in the strategies to get there, and they talk about it in their PLCs, and then they work with their instructional coaches when they need.
Yeah.
And so it's, it all works together.
Cool.
Well, thank you for sharing. This is, like you said, it's a year for us as well. And I know that some of us who are on the board worked hard to get this, and it is a collaboration between the board, the administration, and the teachers. So thank you for all the hard work you do, so.
And thank you for your support.
Yeah, and happy birthday.
Get to that date.
Exactly. Next, we have Read Well by Third Grade, and it's Karen Lateral's birthday, too, I imagine.
Couple of weeks ago.
Easily.
Would you like 29?
We must not have gotten your gift.
It's combined with Deb's. Tom's registered at Macy's.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so who's the MAC user? John, John. Just, I don't know how to put some presentation.
I got it. Yeah, yep.
Read Well.
Hieroglyphics for curiosity thrives here.
Yeah.
Chair Lehman, members of the board, I'm here tonight to speak to you about the Read Well by Third Grade Plan, as I do annually for the past, or I have done annually for the past five years. This is in preparation for approval of the plan. I'll be coming back on May 24th for approval. And the Read Well by Third Grade Plan is set out in the Minnesota Statute 120B.12, specifically subdivision 4A, which outlines the elements of the plan that we are required to report on. So the required components of the plan include that we must adopt a plan that we, where we have all children reading by, or at grade level by the end of third grade. And our plan must include the idea that we have a process to assess our students' level of reading proficiency, that we have a process to notify and involve parents. We must include a description of how interventions will be targeted and/or modified to individual students' needs, and a plan to demonstrate that we're achieving meaningful progress with those interventions. Our interventions must use evidence-based practices with students who are not reading at or above grade level, and we must also identify staff development needs. And then, of course, we must post this plan on the school district website, which we do after it is approved by the board. So as I mentioned, our goal, as set out by the statute and our goal as set out by the district, is to help every child read at or above grade level by the end of third grade. So in order to do this, we need to be able to identify which students are feeling successful or are successful with their reading, and those students who need additional support. And so we have screening that we do multiple times a year to identify students who may need that additional support. And you can see on the left-hand side here, the different types of screening tools that we use at different grade levels. Once we've identified students who need, who may need additional support, we also look, we do a deeper data dive to look at what specific areas of literacy might they need intervention in. So in many cases, that requires that we do additional diagnostic screening. And so when that is required, we do that as well. Once a student is put into an intervention and is receiving intervention services, they're also progress monitored on a weekly basis. And so we monitor their skill development so that we know when we should adjust the intervention or intensify the intervention. The statute also requires that we notify and involve our parents. And so you'll see up here that we've put in the presentation different ways that parents are notified in Tier 1 and Tier 2, and how they would be notified in Tier 3. And you can see that there's a more intensive notification process with Tier 3. So in Tier 1 and Tier 2, buildings send out weekly communications. They also often post information on their school websites. Classroom teachers send out weekly or bi-weekly communications from their classroom. They hold parent-teacher conferences, which would also include the sharing of the screening data that we just talked about. They hold school-wide activity nights to bring parents in, to involve them in the school community, and to help them better understand how to serve their children in the areas of math and reading. And they also communicate volunteering opportunities through the school and often through the teacher newsletters. In Tier 3, when students qualify for an intervention, the Tier 3 interventionists will submit a formal letter to the parents to inform the parents of the child's assessment or screening scores, and to invite the children or the child to an intervention. In addition to that, our interventionists communicate weekly in a general sense with families. They send home weekly information, both to communicate what has been happening in the intervention, and also to provide at-home tips that the parents can do to support the children at home with their reading. Our Tier 3 interventionists also make monthly personalized communication with parents. They work out a schedule to make sure that they're, you know, because it gets really busy, and we want to make sure that they're connecting on an individual level with parents. So they're expected to do that monthly. They send out bi-annual progress reports to update parents on the student's progress in a more formal manner. They do their best to schedule alongside the classroom teachers to attend parent-teacher conferences, and if that is not, if that's not a possibility, then they try to work out a time where they can meet individually with the parent. And then they also support the school-wide activity nights, going above and beyond to host information booths, to bring in the intervention families, to provide them additional support, and I would say additional, an additional sense of community. So the targeted interventions, periodically in Tier 1, which is whole-class instruction. Periodically, students will need, or classrooms may need an intervention, but for the most part, our Tier 1, excuse me, our Tier 1 instruction will include whole-group and individualized direct instruction. And that could take place, or that does take place in the workshop model, and it includes both decodable and leveled texts, so that students have the right types of books that they need to help them learn to become better readers. In Tier 2, you'll see that it says interventions are targeted to the earliest need in the reading intervention. You may recall that we talked about that about a month ago, that we do these diagnostic assessments and deep data dives to find out, in the literacy continuum, where is the student's earliest need showing, so that we can backtrack to what, you know, where did things start to become difficult for the child? We also provide Tier 2 interventions using press, and that's a direct instruction. It's very sequential, and it's, depending on the student's need, it could be phonemic awareness, it could be phonics, it could be fluency, or it could be comprehension. But again, I want to stress that that is directed specifically at the student's need. So if they need phonemic awareness, and they're an older child, they will receive intervention in phonemic awareness. We also, at our elementaries, have scheduled intervention blocks to help students have a time period where they can focus on this extra practice or receive this additional intervention without being pulled out of other core classes or core subject areas. And then all of our elementary buildings apply for and receive Minnesota Reading Corps volunteers, well, they're not really volunteers, they receive a minimal stipend. But the Minnesota Reading Corps tutors are in all of our elementary buildings and in our early childhood center. With our Tier 3, those interventions are also targeted to the student's earliest need in the literacy continuum. We use direct instruction, using level literacy intervention at this time, and/or, depending on the student's need, Orton-Gillingham methodology. And you may recall that I mentioned that Orton-Gillingham is a very systematic process in teaching students those early literacy skills, such as phonemic awareness, phonics, sight words, those types of things. And then I'm excited to say, too, that we have summer opportunities for our students. For the past several years, we've had a Title I Summer Camp for pre-K students who have indicated that there's a potential need. And then we're adding this year a summer camp for K-1 students. It's a limited number this first year, but I'm really proud to say that we have identified students who could potentially benefit from additional Orton-Gillingham instruction. And we're in the process of lining up trained Orton-Gillingham instructors to work with those students during the Summer Success Program that Eric Anderson runs. Finally, the statute asks us to talk about staff development needs. We intend next year to speak specifically to the idea of dyslexia and how to help our teachers better understand what is dyslexia, to dispel any misconceptions that they might have, and then to help them better understand how to recognize the tendencies of dyslexia and what to do when they do recognize those tendencies. And of course, we're looking into how can we better include strategies in our classrooms to make sure that those students who may have dyslexic tendencies are receiving the types of instruction that they need. In Tier 1, in our classroom, for staff development, we will be having summer professional development to roll out our new literacy curriculum. And we have ongoing support planned throughout the school year as well, to make sure that it's not a once-and-done professional development. It's really important that we help the teachers best understand how to implement the literacy curriculum, but then we'll make sure through the instructional coaches and through the curriculum mentors that we will have support available for those teachers during the school year. For Tier 2, we are working on beefing up, as you heard earlier, our professional learning communities and instructional coach supportive data analysis. So it's really important when we're looking at reading that we make sure that we're really paying attention to the discrete skills that students need development in. And so our instructional coaches are very skilled at that and can help our PLCs to better examine the data, so they can make informed decisions. And then for Tier 3, we provide ongoing professional development in our screening areas, as well as in how to better analyze data, how to target instruction, how to be effective in progress monitoring, and how to adjust interventions when they may need to be adjusted to make them more challenging, or when they may need to be adjusted to make them, to try another tack. And then, of course, we continue to provide Orton-Gillingham training for our Tier 3 interventionists. Our goal is to make sure that 100% of our Tier 3 interventionists are Orton-Gillingham-trained. So these are the requirements set out by the statute for the Read Well by Third Grade Plan, and I will be returning on May 24th to seek your approval of the plan.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Dr. Patatchik?
One of the things, one of the last things you said there was, the goal was to have 100% who were familiar. What is it now?
If we look at the last three years of MCA data, it hovers around 68%. Let's see, I have it right here. It, 2015, it was 73%. 2016, it was about 67%, and I'm rounding there, but barely. And 2017 was 68%. The 2018 MCA preliminary data is available, but we do not, are not able to, at this time, provide that generalized data, so.
And you gave me the student scores, I think, is what you just did. My question was, I think you were going to train the instructional coaches or someone in knowing the Gillingham?
Oh, our Tier 3 interventionists, the majority of our Tier 3 interventionists are trained in Orton-Gillingham and use the methodology in their interventions. But as you know, there's always turnover with any type of position. And so our goal is to continue training new interventionists as they onboard, to make sure that everybody's trained.
Okay, so right now, it's a majority. The goal is 100%.
I would say right now, it's 100%, but we do have some transitions for next year, which will require us to do additional training.
Thank you.
Director Pelletier?
Excellent presentation. Thank you so much. Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. One was alluded to by Director Patatchik, just the training, you know, through all of our previous conversations, a couple of things that resonated with me was some of the other districts that lead in dyslexia, for example, have a really good ongoing training component. It's not a one-and-done. So I'm really pleased to hear you say that. And then I just wanted to ask you, this triggered a little bit, when you were talking about the Tier 2, something about not pulling kids out of classes. Can you speak a little bit more to that? Like, what does that mean?
Sure. In a modern school, in modern society, students have many needs, many things that they need to learn about. And so our school days are jam-packed with learning. In addition to that, our students also, as you know, need to have breaks, they need to have recess, they need to have lunch, they need to go to the specialists to learn about the arts or about physical education. And so in the past, to do a pull-out intervention, students would need to be pulled from something. And we've always said, do not pull them from core areas such as reading and math. But the principals have been working really hard over the last several years to manipulate their building schedules, which I've only barely touched. Those are really complicated. But they've really worked hard to fit in a time period during the school day where the entire grade level could have about a half an hour, 20 minutes to half an hour block, where they could work together to do interventions. And the interventionists could also push in during that time to work with students. Now, you can never predict where need will fall. And so there are still maybe time periods where, you know, if we have a large need in grade 4, and we don't have enough bodies there during that block to serve all of the students' needs in grade 4, we may need to dip in to grade 4 a little bit differently. But overall, the intervention block should solve a lot of those issues about pulling students out and having them miss something like art or social studies or science or those types of classes.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Director Stivlin?
Kind of in the same line. So if we're short on an interventionist or someone who can work with a, like, a Tier 2, it would be probably, do we ever use parent volunteers for that?
We've used rotary volunteers a little bit. We've also used, I don't know that we've specifically trained parent volunteers, because generally, what we'd like to do is to have the highest-trained people that we possibly can, working with our neediest students. can, working with our neediest students. And it's not necessarily that we lack the staffing to do it, it's just that the time periods may not always work out as precisely as we would like.
It just seems like that might be a way to have a little bit of extra support for certain students, and I just wondered if that was something that we do, or we just, there's a reason why we don't do it, or something like that.
Well, I would go back to the idea that when you look at best practice and interventions, it always stresses that you really want to have highly, highly-trained people working with the students who have the greatest need.
As far as the screening goes at the beginning of the year, what happens if you have students that are coming into kindergarten above grade level? Do the tests still, are the testing, the screeners still appropriate at that point?
Yes, they are.
And if so, what do they discover, and then what would happen?
Well, you'll see in the plan that there is information about the Gifted and Talented Program, or I would say the gifted clusters.
That starts quite a bit later, after kindergarten, it's fourth grade, so.
But what I would say here is that, first of all, yes, the screeners would address those skills that those potentially gifted students might have. For example, if you have a kindergarten student who comes to school reading already, the teacher would identify that and use a different assessment with that student, rather than saying, "Do you know what this letter is?" Of course I do, I can read at the fourth grade level already. But then I'd also say that in, within the literacy curriculum, it really is a beautiful thing, because it provides for that type of differentiation. And so the teachers have access to a variety of leveled texts, and if they don't have the right text at their classroom, they can go to the first-grade classroom as well. But for the most part, they have a large range of levels of text in their classroom. And I would say that the skills that are being addressed in the curriculum really expect a high level of thinking out of our students. In fact, I heard a kindergarten teacher today, who was picking up her curriculum, she's been sampling the curriculum, just to kind of get her toes wet, and she has been using the word persistence with her students, because it was in the curriculum. I mean, they don't baby down the talk. And she said, "It took us a while, you know, we had to talk about it a lot, and we needed to explore all facets of what the word might mean." She said, "But now my kindergartners know what persistence means, and they're using it in a meaningful way." I say, "Kindergartner is persistence, yay!"
That's great.
So yes, there are many opportunities for those students.
I'm thinking that must feel very empowering for those kindergartners, too, to, I'm sure the reaction when they use that word with other people who aren't accustomed to hearing a kindergartner say that is probably kind of fun, right?
Yes, it is.
So, one other question here. Can you talk a little bit more about what PRESS is, and how it's being used, how it fits in? It sort of seems like it's a, I don't really quite understand how it fits in with the whole big scheme of how everything else is working.
Well, we are, we have a multi-tiered systems of support plan, which the goal of that is to provide different types of instruction and different intensity of instruction for students when they're showing that they're not responding to what's happening in the classroom necessarily. And so, say for example, so I have a ninth-grade student at home who does not read very well. He cannot spell. I do highly suspect he is dyslexic. He does have ADHD, so that comorbidity thing is there. He really would have benefited in elementary school from a systematic, explicit program like PRESS. And so what PRESS does is it would look at a student like my child and say, "Okay, I want you to read this passage for me. Oh, you read this passage, you skipped lines, you made a lot of mistakes with the words, you didn't read very fast. I'm concerned about the mistakes that you're making." So that might be a phonics thing. You can kind of read, you know, I see that, but you make so many mistakes, that we need to go back and look at, are there elements of phonics instruction that we're lacking for you? And with that, then what we do is we, like I mentioned, diagnostic assessments. The phonics continuum is very well-established in the reading world, the order of events that instruction should, in which instruction should take place. And so diagnostic assessments go back and say, can you spell words, or can you identify words like cat? Those are called CVC words. And if you can, then we move on to the next skill, and the next skill, and the next skill. And once we identify where he's not successful, then we teach specifically to that skill. Instead of trying to go back and reteach everything that he was successful on, we start where, okay, I see that you don't understand the silent E, or the magic E, depending on where you grew up, you know, potato, potato. And so then we would work on teaching that skill, and then we would move to the next skill in the continuum. And this is something that our classroom teachers have been trained in over multiple years, and are expected to implement with their students when they notice that they're missing those skills. So I hope that.
And so that's like, so that would, we call that a Tier Two intervention. So typically, that isn't going to be a whole class.
Correct.
But I think I saw somewhere in here that said there might be a time where a teacher's discovering that, like, wow, a ton of, like, half the class is having the same issue.
Yep.
And then you might just go ahead and implement a piece of that program for the whole class.
And it depends, you know, we get different populations.
Yeah.
In our buildings, and we get, even year by year, or classroom by classroom, the populations could vary. And so, for example, if, say for example, Annette were teaching kindergarten, and I were teaching kindergarten, just by the luck of the draw, Annette may have, you know, maybe 10% of her students need an intervention such as PRESS, and I might have 50% of my students who need an intervention. It's more effective in that type of situation to teach the skill to the whole class, do a really solid intervention with gradual release of responsibility to make sure that it's being taught well. And then after you do that for about two weeks, you reassess, and in all likelihood, a large portion of those kids would have picked up the skill through whole-class instruction, and then you could take that remaining group to do a Tier Two, targeted for that particular group.
Cool.
Anyone else?
I have a couple more.
Oh.
Not tonight, but on another occasion, I would appreciate talking about kids such as ninth graders and who are stuck with reading, and what we do to provide for them.
Right, so is that going to be the next curriculum?
WhisperSync on, from, not to do a plug here, but WhisperSync with Audible and Amazon Books is a miracle worker. Just have to say that, if you have any older non-readers, so.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you.
That's good to know.
Director Stivlin, you had a couple more?
Yeah, just had, so can you just talk briefly about how the Curriculum Committee was formed, and how often will that be turned over? How does that work, the sort of structure of that?
Well, the Curriculum Committee, let's see, January, a year and a half ago, we met with all elementary teachers on a professional development day. We happened to be at Oakland Middle School. And I announced our intent for what we would be doing after that, and I told them, watch for an email. And then after that point, I emailed out several times with a form to say who would like to be involved. When we sat down to look at the distribution, we actually really had a nice distribution across schools and across grade levels. In a couple situations, there were, we needed a little bit more support, and so we reached out to people to say, "Hey, you've done this before, could you do this again?" But for the most part, I'd probably say that maybe only happened in one or two situations. The rest of the people volunteered to be on the committee. The committee has sort of turned into now an implementation committee, and we've been continuing to meet to talk about implementation, sort of a continuous improvement process to make sure that we're being as successful as we can, and so that we can make it a successful endeavor for the rest of our staff when they onboard, starting in July. And so really, the curriculum review, as in are we choosing our curriculum, that process is completed, but we're not disbanding, because reviewing your curriculum is an ongoing process. And so we'll continue to look at it, continue to tweak it, because we want to be offering the best possible approaches for our students.
So that leads me to my very last question, and I thank you very much for letting me have this much time. How long do you think it will take before we see with the new, with the whole new program? How long can we expect before we start to see results?
I would expect that we would see results right away. However, I would like to be cautious about that, because for some, it will be a small shift in teaching practice, for others, it will be a large shift in teaching practice. And so to make, to expect everybody to make the exact same growth, of the teachers to make the exact same growth, and to be highly successful bang right off the bat, they're all going to proceed at a different pace. But I do expect that we'll be seeing results changing.
That's good.
And of course, we're supporting them, as I mentioned, you know, the instructional coaches, our advanced team, if you want to call it, our advanced implementation team, as well as the district supporting ongoing professional development during the school year, not just this one time during the summer.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Karen. So this will be before us, board members, on May 24th for adoption. The actual plan is attached as part of the presentation, so encourage everyone to read if they have any questions before then, certainly get a hold of Karen, and we will look forward to the adoption.
Thank you. And I would like to state, thank you very much for considering the curriculum that we put in front of you. And also, please feel free to reach out to me at any time to talk about the plan or to ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last report is the open forum procedure, and I'll turn that over to Director Hepner.
Well, it's listed as a report, and then you see later, it's in action item if we care to take a vote on it. At the last meeting, we brought forth, if you're looking at your screen, we brought forth the blue-colored proposal. We had started with the red, and currently, I believe, am I saying that wrong? I think the blue is the current. We proposed the red, and now the green is the adjustment after we had our most recent policy working group meeting, after listening to what everybody had to say. The only thing that we changed in our current language is the word "individuals" instead of just "staff" or "students." And part of that was that we were discussing our policies, and in currently, in our operating norms, in a policy that was revised August 11th of 2016, under the heading "How We Conduct Meetings," the following language is listed. 713.3, "Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students." 713.4, "Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told his or her privilege of speaking has ended." Now, that's current language in our operating norms. A speaker at open forum, I guess, laid out the reasons why you would say no to this, if you believe that open forum is a place for the community to be able to have a, how is that addressed, to have a place where free speech and true speech could be spoken. And if you believe that the purpose of the open forum is to call out individuals rather than call us out together as a board, those are some of the issues that we talked about. And frankly, when we had our discussion, we talked about the idea of perhaps open forum should be before the meeting begins, rather than during the meeting, and that discussion has been had a number of times before. So I guess what I would open up to discussion tonight is, take a look at the blue language with the green edition, basically changes "individuals" rather than "staff" or "students", and the rest remains the same. Sarah, Paula, if you have anything else you want to throw in there?
Yeah, and if, you know, I'm recalling the conversation correctly, I think this is where Director Hepner, Director Stivlin, and I saw things just a little differently. I do believe board members, you know, are subject to, you know, comments, concerns, whatnot. I mean, I agree with the vulgarity and the character attacks and the malice, but in terms of complaints, or concerns, or, you know, specific things about us as individuals, I feel that's something that comes with the territory as an elected official, and I support keeping board members, you know, part of that, you know, being named. As far as, I think I said this last meeting, community members, absolutely not, you know, laypeople that are just kind of out there, I don't feel that that's, you know, that's fair, and there's not a due process for them to respond, or have their time at the mic, so to speak. But as far as board members, I really believe that that's something that we don't really deserve any kind of absolution from, so.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll say something. I guess I kind of agree with Paula to some extent. And I think the problem with trying to separate out, I mean, I think we were just looking for a nice streamlined, simple solution to trying to restore and ensure that we have decorum at the open forum. I wanted to point out, too, that we did discuss, at some point in the future, looking at the format of how we do open forum, and when it is, and some of the different options we might have around that, that that would be something that we would, you know, maybe would consider. But at this time, we're just talking about, you know, keeping everything the same as we do it now, but just trying to rein in some of the, some of the random negativity that we are kind of not really finding all that helpful. I think when we start to talk about individual people, we're getting, we're losing sight of what the board work is really all about. This is about the district, it's about our schools, it's about, you know, learning environments. It's not about individuals really so much. So I guess that's kind of what my thought process is on this.
Director Pelletier?
Does anyone else want to talk first?
Oh.
No, go ahead.
No.
You know, like I've said before, I really appreciate the work and the intent of this, and I support that. Where I differ is that, you know, we signed up for this job, and I, we're in a, I feel like we're in a different position than staff, our kids, our students, our community members. And, you know, I guess for me, I look at this verbiage, and, you know, identifying staff, students, or community members by name or implication will not be permitted, would be more satisfying to me. But, you know, I guess, you know, we showed up for the fight, if we can't take it, we should get out of the ring. That's kind of the way I view this. I would support something like having the forum, and I don't know how we can do this at this point, if it's even possible, but we do have a judge on the table now, so maybe he can speak to that. But having our forums prior to the meeting, speakers in the same format they are can speak only to an agenda item, for example. And if, and at the end of the meeting, if we can open it up again, let the kids go home, and if people have other issues or concerns outside of the agenda, you know, maybe we can have two forums. And maybe that would kind of alleviate some of that. But I guess for me, as uncomfortable as it is, I guess I just, I don't support that. I appreciate your work, and I certainly appreciate the intent.
Director Patatchik?
Couple things. Number one, I like the first part of what you said, adding community members in there. And the reason I say- And the reason I say that is that, like Paula said, and you've identified as well, there is a belief in me, I don't like to restrict free speech. And if somebody comes, and they do on occasion, take shots at me, that's okay. I can live with that. What I don't want to happen, though, is individual disputes by community members not liking what another community member did, and then suddenly that gets a life of its own. As a board, if we do things that are distasteful or whatever, we can live with that. And it doesn't hurt to say, okay, we know what the community really thinks. So I'm much more comfortable with that. But I find it troublesome when side disputes are going on, or to use a stronger word than really needs, a feud or something is going like that, that's distasteful. I don't think, and I, and it's interesting, because you put this on the board, and it was very timely. Because what's happened is it's really calmed down a lot. So sometimes the threat in itself can be a cure. So I think that's important. One other thing I'd share with you, and I was going to share that a little bit on my comments in 916, they do something a little different on their forum that I think is pretty cool, and I think I sent most of you a copy on that, is, one, they have an open forum about the same place we do, and it's three minutes, and you can speak. But that's for anything that is not an agenda topic. Then what they have is a second category, and it's an agenda topic. And what would happen is this, and that's five minutes, and they sign up ahead again. And so, for example, at the meeting at 916, I ended up being the presenter on dyslexia. As soon as I was finished, someone who was a proponent of dyslexia had five minutes to speak. And they did that with other items. The other thing I'd say, though, in fairness, and trying to be as objective as I can, they don't have as many forum speakers as we do. I'm saying it's, it's more a rarity, but it does happen, particularly during negotiations.
Director Hepner?
Well, I just, part of me, I guess personally, I could care less. I think we have a responsibility, though, when I hear language like, they can take shots at us, we signed up for this fight, we're in the ring, that's really not civil discourse to me. Yeah, you can do that. God knows what Trump's sitting where he is, we all do that kind of stuff. But I don't, I don't think that's why we got on the board, was to have shots taken at us, or signed up for a fight, or to get in the ring with some community member who thinks we made a incorrect decision. But our policy working group also said at the time, you know, we'd throw this out, but if there's not kind of unanimity, it doesn't make, it's not a big enough deal. And maybe what we should have is a broader discussion about the three or five minutes. Should it be videotaped, or should it not be videotaped? Should it be before the meeting instead of during the meeting? I mean, there's a lot of things you can do, and whether it's 916, EMI does it a different way, all, we could look at all surrounding districts, they all do it differently. But it is our board meeting, and we can do what we want, that we think is, I think, the best for the school district. And I'll point out again, we welcome citizen input, because it fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. If the speaker isn't going to do that, kind of push us to make better decisions, or push us to have improved learning experiences, why are they coming before us? That's the purpose of our open forum. Our open forum, not theirs, ours. This is our open forum for our meeting. But having said that, I don't think there's anybody in our working group that would feel bad if we said, let's just go back to original language, and we'll let somebody else talk about this at another time.
Director Pelletier?
I hear, I truly hear what you're saying, and I am a huge proponent of decorum as well. But, you know, is there any way we can just amend this? What if we were to consider vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints will not be permitted, just period? We don't have to get into the weeds with staff or anything, it just will not be allowed. And that, and then we're incumbent, if this is indeed, as you say, which I support that, our meeting, then it's incumbent upon us to say enough is enough, and stop the, you know, I think it puts it on us, the power on us. That's one way to look at it. But again, I, in protecting the public's right of freedom of speech, and also our right, as you say, to have a, an appropriately well-run meeting, I don't know. I don't know.
Director Stivlin?
Thank you. Thank you, George, for your comments. I appreciate your eloquence. I think you've said it exactly right, and I agree with you completely. I appreciate your suggestion as well, Director Pelletier. I just think that's too broad. And I think, in having, remembering the conversation we had as a working group, I think it's just not something we think is really necessary to change if, you know, if we have this much, you know, question and concern around it. It's not something we feel super strongly about. And I think that we can leave it just like it is and do what you said. We do have the right to stop it for, you know, the way it's written now. And I think, if I remember last time we talked about this, Chair Lehman, your concern was that, you know, as, as the chair, you didn't want to stop someone from speaking and then not have the back of the rest of the board. I think we talked about having the right, as any board member, to say, hey, you know what, I'm kind of not comfortable with where this is going, could we please, you know, point of order, or whatever you want to call it, could we please, you know, question this and then go forward from there? I think that we always have that right to stop it, right? Or at least ask the question. Well, I'm curious to know what you would think about that.
Me?
Mm-hmm.
I'm ambivalent on this whole thing. I think that, I think community members have the right to come in and question any decision I make. I think, you know, reading that we're modeling civil discourse should be enough for people to understand what is appropriate, what isn't appropriate. However, that hasn't been the case all the time. I think it's a bigger question as to whether or not you even want open forum. I think it's probably, I agree with Director Hepner, if it's not unanimous, I don't think it's probably worth spending a lot of time on, because whether I'm here or someone else is here, the rules would want to be followed by anyone. So I'm comfortable the way it is. I'm comfortable saying, you know what, let's look at the global issue of where you place open forum, five minutes, three minutes. I agree with Director Patacik. Having served as a city attorney for a number of cities, everyone is different. There's no uniformity in any open forum. Some don't do it, some don't video, some say, like you said, Director Patacik, anything that's not on the agenda. So it truly is your meeting, you set the rules, others have to follow it. If the rules want to be changed, the majority needs to do that. So I, I'm probably comfortable sending it back, saying, keep it as is and work on the global picture, but. Director Pelletier?
So when you say that, is that a suggestion that the policy working group goes back to the drawing board and comes up with another recommendation to either have it, you know, items not on the agenda, minutes, you know, three minutes, five minutes before or after? I'm just asking, is that what you're, when you say address the global picture, can you elaborate on that?
Well, I'm just following up on the idea that, you know, if it's not unanimous, we've all talked about other ideas, you had some great ideas of, you know, having some in the beginning, some at the end, so that students can go home. I think it also is a product of the time. I mean, having been on this board for almost eight years, this has never been an issue until we had a controversial subject come up. So, you know, until the next one comes up, we may be, well, you know, you could say almost anything, but then the next controversial subject will come up, and you'll be enduring whatever at that point. So I think even if you read it and say it, I don't know how much effect it's going to have, but, you know, whoever, the board chair, will have to enforce the rules as they see fit, so.
Let's move on then.
Okay. Well, it is an action item, so we can, we'll take it up at, after the first action item is Stillwater Area Public Schools Strategic Plan.
All right, thank you. For those folks who are tuning in who may not have had much background information, I'm just going to read some background statements and information about the strategic plan. The purpose of a strategic plan is really to gather feedback from our community and staff and school board to set the direction for our school district for the next three to five years. And for the past 20 months, we've been asking teachers, students, business leaders, and community members to think about what skills, attributes, and knowledge a Stillwater graduate should attain by graduation. This feedback has been considered in district leaders' work with board members to develop a portrait of a graduate vision for our 2018 to 2021 strategic plan. The new strategic plan incorporates this vision along with our mission statement, to set goals for our World's Best Workforce Plan, which will be the basis of our work. This is an adaptive plan that can be adjusted according to emerging influences in the future, the next three to five years. It's the school board's responsibility for developing community engagement strategies, creating or revising policy, and legislative outreach impacts and efforts. A reminder that this strategic plan is an overall umbrella. It's a little bit different than what we've done in the past, because we're embedding the World's Best Workforce Plan within that, and the Portrait of a Graduate work within that. Those strategies, as you all know, are yet to be developed, with some of the specific content moving forward about, you know, things we've heard about, about financial literacy and career and college development, that kind of thing. So with that is our recommendation to the board to approve the one-page strategic plan overview.
All right. Before we discuss, could I have a motion in a second to approve the strategic plan?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Director Stivlin?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm glad you said the very last thing you just said, because I wasn't exactly sure what we were actually going to be. What are we voting on? What are we approving right now? It's just this one page?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That helps, because there's a lot of other questions I have, a lot of stuff, so that'll make this easier. I have, I probably should have brought this up before, but I actually just noticed it like yesterday, and I thought, okay, I'll just wait. On the left-hand side, underneath the word, it says draft, and it says our mission, our vision, our goals, and our parameters. And then underneath that, it's like a description of what those things are. So like, our vision, it says what we commit to creating for our students. I think those are really generic words that kind of are confusing, and I wonder how people would feel about taking them out, and can we do that? Do we, can we just make the topic, like, I think most people know what a mission and a vision is, you know? Do we need to have the describer words underneath it? And just, just write our mission, our vision, our goals, and then make them maybe bigger or something? Is that, would that be something that people would be okay with, or any other thoughts? I just found it confusing at first when I looked at those. I was like, wait a minute, is that the mission? No, the mission's over here.
Procedurally, someone can make that motion, we could see how it goes and discuss that. That would be the proper way to handle that. So if that's something you want to make a motion to do, we can see and hear what people have to say.
Can I do that now?
Sure.
Okay. Can I make a motion that we take those descriptor words off on the left-hand side of the page?
Okay. There's a motion to remove those descriptor words. Basically, it's the black writing under the red.
Right, right.
On the left-hand column of the one page. Is there a second?
I'll second for sake of discussion.
All right, so we can discuss that. Any other?
Okay, so I already said my piece. Does anyone have anything else to say?
Yeah, does anyone else want to? I was going to say, so, does anyone have any?
I think the question, and we could go through the whole plan, the question that I have is, there are some areas where I think, personally, I like the plan, but I think there are some areas where I would suggest minor tweaks here and there. This one, I think, probably does feel a little cleaner if you don't have the black in there. If you're not knowledgeable at all, they help. Just like, under the goals, those are standard definitions of what should be in a goal and what should not. So I, I don't think they hurt anything, except that if you want to clean it up, make it less wordy, some of those kind of movements help.
Director Hepner?
Well, I, Sarah started, or Director Stivlin started by saying, everybody kind of knows mission, vision. I would wonder about that, if people would know the difference between what a mission and a vision are. When you say goals, what does that mean? And I think Director Patacik has always mentioned specific, measurable, observable. You know, I think that's important for people to see. You know, I think we could probably all wordsmith those things, but I don't, I guess I'll use the comment that Mike made, I don't see how they hurt anything. They, I think they would help somebody who isn't aware, who hasn't had the opportunity to work with an organization where you don't have a mission or a vision, and that could be quite a number of people. I, I don't know.
I could see that. Sorry.
That's all right. Director Lachlan?
And just to build on that, I do think that, you know, there's still room for increased understanding, shared understanding around what is the world's best workforce. And so I think just having some context there, I think helps, you know, for people that might just be coming completely cold to this. So I support leaving the language in.
Director Pelletier?
Yep, I agree. I appreciate your, your concerns, Director Stivlin. But I, I actually had a bit of the opposite interpretation. I was very pleased to see this writing, you know, what is world's best workforce specific? I mean, I just, I appreciated the writing under it, so I guess I would not support that motion. But thank you for offering it.
All right. Anything else? All right, let's vote on the amendment to remove that. All those in favor of removing the language under the specific, our mission, our vision, our goals, our parameters, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Aye?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
To me, I can live either way.
All right. Did you get that bar? Okay. All right, so then we're back to the one page, and I think I took from you, Director Patacik, that you may have some issues.
No, I'm comfortable with everything on that page.
Okay. But I think that's all we're asking to adopt tonight.
Page one?
The last page, two of eight, page two of eight.
This one. Oh. The one pager.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Oh, anyone else? Motion? Director?
We have a motion on the table. Yep. So I was just going to say, I appreciate the, you know, I know we've talked a lot, how do we make sure that we have the Stillwater Area Student Experience weaved through this and making it relevant and specific to our district? So I am very happy to see the goals that are unique to our district listed there.
Great. Anything else? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the strategic plan is outlined on page two of the handout, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. None. Great. All right, the next action item is... Opposed, same sign. None. Great. All right. The next action item is the public forum outline, and I will make a motion to remove that from the action item. I'm not tabling it, because tabling requires it to be brought up at the next meeting. I'm asking that it be removed at this time, and then the policy working group can take a look at all of that was discussed today, or.
No, we're not going to be talking this out anymore.
No, we've got enough to do. We have to give that to the community engagement group.
Oh, here it is.
Engage with the community.
Back burner.
Yeah. That is the other nicety about removing it, is it's, anyone's leisure can bring it back up. So, I'll make that motion at that time. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of removing this from the action item signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we have the board member reports. First is the chair report. We did have a learning session on May 3rd, continuing the discussion of budgetary items and understanding the basics regarding our budget. It discussed the levy basics, our levy current reality, and a levy timeline. And so, everyone is getting caught up on that. I'm sorry, I don't know, when is the next budget one?
May 29th.
May 29th. Correct.
Perfect. So, the next one for the community is May 29th, and then also will be at Central Service.
Correct.
So, we have that. Then, the only other item I would like to indicate, as has been stated, I will be resigning from the board. I have not figured out my timeline yet, but in anticipation of that resignation, one of my working groups is the Partnership Plan, and I think it's better, even though I haven't resigned yet, that someone join that group. I've enjoyed my time. I haven't, we have had only a couple of meetings, but in order to make sure that that continuity continues because of the good work that they do, I'll be stepping aside from that at this point. So, what I would ask is if anyone's interested in taking my spot, to please send me an email. I know Shelley's not here, so I'll throw that out there. If you could get it to me by this weekend, I'll send an email around to the board members who have indicated they want to do it, and I'll select who should, who could fill my spot pursuant to our board policy where the board chair makes those assignments. Other than that, I don't have any other report. So, Director Stivlin, did you have a question about that?
No.
I know you're interested in that, so you can send me that email.
Okay.
Great. Then, I will start at.
Are you done with the board, the board member reports?
No, I'm just starting on that. So, and for board member reports, I'll start with Director Pelletier.
Do you need a closing? You don't have any.
Well, no, I, again, I've got some kind of issue with, is it a board member report or a working group report? But every meeting, this happens to me.
You're very flexible.
I just rhyme together.
And then C, we do that after.
I really appreciate that. All right, I, this is going to, so I wasn't entirely prepared, but the AMSD, I'm the, no, I'm not even, yep, I am going to do that. The AMSD, we had a meeting last Friday. Was it, you were there as well?
And then that?
Yes, and then that was there. And we had a, we had a very interesting audit report about early childhood education, and it was, it was very interesting to see how they measure deliverables, and I was, it was very impressive. And we also discussed Mark Dayton's, again, to, I know Director Potacek has talked about this quite a bit, the request for the additional funding. I can't stress enough that, you know, it's not a done deal. From what we heard in the meeting, the, kind of the opposition is saying that it's too late in the game, and that's, that's simply not the case. So, if you could, you know, consider helping us and reaching out to your legislators and asking for that funding that our kids could use. It would be so, so needed for our children. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Hetmer, any board member report?
Well, I really don't, but I'm going to take a couple minutes. Some of you know I belong to this group called Botfana Fambili, and we are having a fundraiser. Unfortunately, it's on May 22nd. I know that's the day of the retirement dinner for our teachers. But this is our annual fundraiser, and we support students in South Africa, orphans in South Africa. We're in our 11th year, and even though you can't make it and have a lot of fun with us, I certainly would take your donations to this wonderful cause. I know some of you have donated in the past, so I just want to mention that.
Will you send us an email?
I'll send you an email, and I'll even tell you what your portion of the cost is. How's that?
Hey, that's pretty good.
Director Stivlin?
Yes, thank you. I don't have anything in particular to my, my post. There haven't been any meetings from MSHSL. I think there is one coming up, though, so I'll let you know next time. But being that this is teacher, National Teacher Appreciation Week, I have something I just want to share. This is something I actually posted on my, my personal Facebook page last year around this time for the same purpose, and there was an article, really great article, in the Huff Post, in the Huffington Post, that said that between 2009 and 2014, enrollment in teacher education programs dropped 35 percent. Huge, huge jump in just five years. And at the same time, the number of students enrolled in schools is projected to increase by roughly 3 million students in the next decade nationwide. So, we have more students and fewer teachers coming, coming through the system as we speak. And so, you know, that's kind of alarming. It makes me wonder what, what's keeping people from doing this incredible job, you know? It's a hard job, first of all. We all know that. So, I just, I just wanted to say, I had, this is a statement I had on my page, and I just want to read it tonight. "The most critical thing that we can do to create outstanding schools is to ensure that every classroom has an outstanding teacher in it. To achieve this, we need to remind people what teachers do. They inspire our children to be the best they can possibly be, and they help them gain the skills and attitudes to get there. Salaries matter, but teachers teach because they care. They deserve our highest respect. They deserve our support and our encouragement to be at their very best every day. I believe that it also means that we need to change our way of thinking about what matters most in education. It isn't about the testing. It's not about technology or analyzing data or filling out forms or following protocols. It's about de-stressing and decluttering the job so that teachers can focus on creating nurturing environments where magic happens, and students are encouraged to see themselves as truly being able to be more, do more, try harder, and go farther." And I, so I just want to say to all of you amazing teachers out there in the front lines of our schools, thank you. You amaze me every day.
Thank you very much. Director Potacek?
Yep. Couple things. Number one, I just want to make you aware, and I think I sent everybody information on this, but at the next general meeting for C, they are going to have some more people who are very prominent in Decoding Dyslexia, Rachel Berger, who is the founder and president of Decoding Dyslexia Minnesota, and also Rachel Deppa, a board member of Decoding Dyslexia Minnesota, and apparently she works at the Delano Public Schools. And so, C meetings are generally open to superintendent, school board members, and occasionally other staff comes. So, if that's something you're interested, you may want to attend. Also, the date of this is May 24th, three days after the session closes for the legislature. And who's going to be there is Tom Melcher, who is pretty much the guru on finance for MDE, and also Director Adish Uni, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. He is also from the Minnesota Department of Education. So, again, that goes from 9:30 to 11:30. If you're interested in all, just let Barb know. And they are ones they like to take account, because they do have a meal that's optional. You can stay for afterwards or not. And I just won Tom over. Then also, something that, that you, I think are interested in is 916 and what happened there. And again, this is almost kind of anticlimactic, because what happened is, and I sent you all a sheet, and it's about three pages long, and there's 14 different things that happened at that meeting. It was the longest 916 meeting I've attended. It went from 6 o'clock till 10 o'clock. And it wasn't because of our request, believe me. But anyway, the request for dyslexia service, I got to make the presentation. And right after the presentation, there was a woman from White Bear Lake who talked on behalf of dyslexia services. And I would say after that, Connie Hayes, the superintendent, spoke, and she's asked that there is going to be a meeting in June with special education directors and also other leaders from the various districts. And basically, what they're going to do is just try to find out how much interest is there out there. And to be honest with you, 10 of the 14 delegates, which is usually a little less, there was very little question or comment. And now, whether they did that because of Minnesota nice, or whether they were unaware, I don't know. But they heard the request, and it was made, and all of that. And the woman who spoke from the audience was very passionate, and it was very, very hard. And very similar to the speakers we saw, she shared her own experience. And boy, it's heart-wrenching. It just is, some of these stories. Regardless, but that's probably the issue you're most concerned with. Some of the other ones is that what is known as Capital View, which deals with some of our older students in 916, is going to be called a quora, similar to quorum. And the new facility is anticipated to be done pretty much by the summer, and generally, it's, it's right on time. And they house ALCs, among other things. 916 is going through a little bit of a transition, because we've got a new human resource person, and plus, we also got a new finance person. So, both of those are kind of in transition, and I would say one may have been there for two months and one for one month. And that complicates, and it's going to be related to something else that happened, and it probably was the most significant thing that happened that night, was labor contract negotiations. And we went into closed session, and we were in closed session for at least an hour. We came out afterwards and had to deal with two contracts, one for Local 70 Bargaining Group, and the other one was 284 Bargaining Group, and the vote resulted in a tie, which means that the two tentative agreements were not ratified. And there were, as I mentioned earlier, there were four people who weren't there. So, the way the superintendent has written it here tells you, "School district leaders will continue negotiating with each bargaining group and bring revised employment contracts to the board for ratification in the near future."
Can you share with, and if you don't want to, I understand, but can you share how you voted on those?
Yes, I voted to accept.
And what was the, what were the terms broadly?
Very broadly, is they, they were very, very generous.
They were generous?
Yes. And, and for a lot of school districts, they were too generous. One of the things that I think you're seeing happen in 916, and it's a very pivotal time. The organization has changed a lot. One is the people who have served in the past, a lot of them, there's been turnover. Also, what we got is four additional districts, and those districts, comparatively speaking, are not as well-off as some of the other districts. And so, they have trouble with contracts that are more generous than what they have back at home. Now, you're nodding your head. You probably see that a little bit in EMI as well. And I'm saying that was some of the complexity of it. But the sad part, from my point of view, and I editorialize a little bit, lots of the contracts that were negotiated this year were very generous. Unfortunately, the two identified groups, it's, it's not fair to them. They come late, they're smaller groups, and, but that's, that's my feeling. But again, it got complicated, because the finance director, human resource people who carry those things out are new. And so, those are some of the things where the stars aren't aligned like they should be.
Thanks for voting the way you did on that.
Yeah, thank you. So, anyway, that's 916. The other probably most important thing, and that has to do with my work with the Legislative Committee, and a couple things that have been done, and who's played a very strong leadership role, they're not alone, but is Scott Kruenquist for AMSD. And one of the things they put together, and they worked hard on this, required a lot of legwork, is they polled a number of their members, and they did a survey. And what they particularly looked at were needs, and if nothing's done with a budget, what does that mean for next year? And one of the things we've talked about, our number-one platform goal was the shortfalls in special education. And the state, the state school districts have spoken pretty strongly, we needed help on that, and we continue to need help on that. Secondly, what they also surveyed and they got was English language learner programs. And so, they put out a new news release, April 20th, and what it had to deal with is the shortcomings, and it was well over $100 million. Well, for the most part, the only one who responded to it, and thank goodness he did, was Mark Dayton. And so, Dayton, as part of his proposal, is asking for $138 million, and he's asking for it to plug some of these holes. Now, the point is, at this point, and Jennifer heard it as well as I did when Scott was pleading, this is not going to help take care of itself. If you support what the governor did, contact your local legislator and encourage others to do it. Now, if you don't have it, Barb and I both have it, is that Scott sent us the telephone numbers for all your legislators, and then if you don't, you know, you're not comfortable with that, the emails for all your legislators. And there's a crib sheet on the type of things you can talk about, special education being one of those. And there are several others. English language learners would be another of those. Plus, regardless, we know it's not a funding year, but at the same time, this is, there's a surplus this year. And another scary thing that you may want to mention or not, that's up to you or others, is for the first time, they're looking at the state constitution and changing it so that transportation has a designated purpose in sales taxes. Now, the trouble with that is, if you take that amount of money out of the total budget, you've got the same competitors for a smaller pot. And so, we're not opposed to transportation, but golly, that moves us down in terms of priority or importance. So, that kind of captures it. That's what I was alluding to when I talked about Dayton, and he talked about our shortfall and a lot of other schools there. So, I hope the spirit moves you. I hope other people feel that way. If you want to look at Wednesday's article on Dayton, If you want to look at Wednesday's article on Dayton, you've also got, and I shared a couple of those other people who don't agree with what he's doing there. But I feel that's part of my job, is to advocate for kids, and that's what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Lachlan, we'll move on to just board member reports, if you have anything, or...
Yeah, one event that I went to was on Friday, April 27th. I've had the good fortune of attending the last few years now. Every April, there is a National Day of Silence, and what this day does is it shines a light and underscores the significance of our students who are in the LGBTQ community, whose, whose stories and experiences are often pushed to the margins and silenced, and this is an opportunity for students to take back their power, so to speak, by exercising their right to not speak for the day, to, to bring awareness and attention to the disproportionate amount of bullying and, like I said, marginalization. And that was in the ALC, and several students spoke, and very powerful day as it always is. And after the finance meeting, when we met, I had left early to attend the Konamichi Concert, which was just like all of our other theater art and music endeavors in the district, wonderful, and I think there are 17 graduating seniors this year, Zach Sawyer had said, from, from the orchestra, so best of luck to them, and thank you for the night of beautiful music.
Thank you very much. Director Pelletier?
Are we on to working group reports?
Board member report, working group report, yes.
All right, the community engagement team. So we had the world's best workforce, just going to announce that we have our first meeting scheduled for May 17th. This first meeting will be an hour and a half with, it'll include introductions, a brief summary by Dr. Bob McDowell explaining how we got to this, what world's best workforce is, what the group is tasked to do, next steps, and future meeting dates. We are still narrowing down leadership, but initial conversations have been made and have been well-received. The community engagement team also met to discuss next steps with this particular, with our group. Some of the topics that we discussed are as follows. Continued discussions of bell times, what that means, feasibility, how might our mental health work mix in with this topic, and next steps. We had a long discussion on intentional engagement. How do we engage with underserved and unheard pockets of our population? Initial ideas were broached, such as scheduling meetings in various locations, such as Boutwell's, Oakland Junior High, Stillwater Middle School, the community center in Simera, and so on and so forth. The hope, again, is to be intentional and approachable to meet people where they are, and we had a very rich conversation about it, and hopeful that that's going to continue. In addition to this form of engagement, we also discussed how to build a volunteer network, and we plan to meet in June to learn more and delve further into that. Lastly, we discussed safety in schools. We're very pleased that this topic is progressing. We are all in agreement that this needs to be at the forefront of our discussions and our planning. And my add-on is that the community engagement team will not be taking on the topic of public forums. That's it.
Can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
Would the May 17th meeting, that's your inaugural meeting with your group, would that be appropriate for other board members to attend, just so we can learn?
Yeah, I actually was thinking about that. I don't see any reason why we couldn't, we would just need to post it in time. We have time to do that. I absolutely have no...
Could we go ahead and post that? Because I would really like to just see the presentation, just to hear, and say, "Good luck, you guys," kind of thing. Just pass the baton off, whatever. Okay.
No, Director Hepner, anywhere?
Policy working group continued to work through the 200s. We have a meeting May 14th at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and I anticipate we'll finish the 200s and bring those to you end of May, beginning of June.
Thank you very much. Director Stivlin, any working group report?
No.
All right. With that, I will adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, finance working group.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, so the finance working group will be meeting the morning of Tuesday, May 15th. And as I indicated earlier, the board will have some decisions to make with some time implications, so be, stay tuned for, for the learning session and other finance working group meetings.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm sorry, anyone else? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.